Tuesday, January the thirty first, two thousand twenty-three. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live and the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. This meeting will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Tonight, I will make two notes. The first is that we were advised by council to add a section into our, the beginning of the meeting just to formally advise all residents regarding virtual meetings, given that I know at our last meeting, we had some difficulties, technical difficulties, I think, during the livestream. And the second thing is I'm just going to note that Selectman Lou Franco is attending with us, is attending the meeting tonight remotely and is on Zoom, and the remaining members are here in person. Do we have any public comments this evening from the board?
I just wanted to say that I attended today's assessors meeting, assessors board meeting, and we had two other select board members there, Mr. Franco and Mr. Alonso, and both of them spoke in public comment. Mr. Franco addressed some false or misinformation that was flying around on Facebook, which I found very reassuring because there's a lot of misinformation going out on Facebook these days. Mr. Alonso addressed something, and I'm just, I'm just curious. What is the point of the investigation? Because, Mr. Alonso, you wanted them, the Board of Assessors, to publicly vote of no confidence in the assessment. Is that correct? Was I, was I hearing correctly?
I was not asking them to vote either way. I had asked them because they had, at least one member at the auditorium meeting, I don't remember the exact date of that meeting.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Seventeenth. Had, after listening to all the residents, had said that perhaps a joint vote of both boards showing no confidence would, would enable us to reassess all the properties. And I was asking them what their formal position was because as of that, as of today, they had not taken any formal position about whether they were sticking with what the assessments were and they're going to defend them, or they felt that they were not accurate and did not accurately represent what they felt the assessment should be, and I was just trying to get a clarification from them of what their official position was.
Did you get any clarity at that meeting today on their official position?
Not directly, no. Indirectly, yes. Because at the beginning of the meeting, one of the members said, and I referenced it, was that they don't feel it was an error in assessment, it was an error in communication, which I asked specifically, is that what the takeaway was from the board? I want to know what the takeaway from the Board of Assessors is. Is that what their feeling is as a board?
Was that their first meeting since that meeting we had with them?
Yeah.
So they had no time to have another meeting and confer on that, correct?
I was hoping that this meeting would have covered that.
They, okay, they didn't confer though before public comment, right? Correct? They didn't.
I would assume, I presume they didn't.
Right? So how would they have come up with that if they hadn't conferred before public comment? Today, if that was their first meeting, after our meeting, they never actually had another conversation until you asked them that question, correct?
Again, I'm assuming that they had not had another meeting.
Okay. Okay. So I'm just, I just don't understand the point of that question, I guess, because if they didn't have another meeting, they didn't have time to deliberate on their stand, then I don't understand why ask that question, especially with an investigation going on right now. I thought the point of the investigation was to answer that question, to find out if everything was, was done appropriately and the assessments stand as is, if they were correct. I thought that was the point of the investigation that we're having right now.
You're correct. It's to take a look at all the assessments that were performed and to get a better understanding of how they were derived and identifying any errors in the process.
Okay, because I haven't seen anything in regards to the investigation. I don't intend to see anything in it for a couple of weeks because it just started. So is there a timeframe for when we're going to be talking about the investigation? Like, do we have meetings that we're going to be speaking about it?
So yes. So we have some internal meetings on the investigative team, and then February the seventh, our next meeting, is when I expect us to have a more robust presentation on an update on where we're at.
Okay. The seventeenth, okay.
On the seventh.
The seventh. Oh, okay. So it's sooner, okay.
Yeah, next week.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I just, because I felt like, first off, I don't think a lot of people attend their meetings. I don't think that the Vice Chair or whoever was running the meeting is really good at running those meetings. I don't, I think that public comment should have just been public comment, and it was really more of an answer, a question-answer session, and I think that some people may have taken advantage of that. Her, her lack of, I guess, I don't even know what the word would be. She's just not experienced in that role. She's fairly new to the committee, and I don't think they have a lot of public, you know, public going to their meetings. So I just, I felt like she was on the spot a lot, asking personal opinions, and I don't think that she was equipped to answer those and represent the committee. That's just my takeaway from going to the meeting today. That's why I just went to, just wanted to see what was going to be said there.
Okay. Thank you, Heather, for that comment and those questions. Do we have any more public comments?
I have no comments.
So I do. First, I went to the same meeting as Selectwoman Soroka has just said, and the one thing I want to say that I want people to take away from the, it was brought up by several residents that they wish the process would include their ability to meet with the Board of Assessors before such time as they render a decision on their abatements. That has, that was brought up at least three separate times, and I certainly hope the Board of Assessors takes them at their, you know, hears that because that is what people are looking at. As far as having my, the reasoning behind my question and, and the further comment, I will say that when six hundred, well, close to six hundred people fill an auditorium with an unprecedented increase that this town, at least to my knowledge, has ever seen in evaluations and increases, this is affecting people's lives. And if I take that to heart and I, I treat it with an air of concern and maybe urgency so we can get to the bottom of it, I make no apologies for that. To the point that these are elected officials and anybody's lack of experience at running a meeting, while I can be sympathetic to that, it is way overridden by the fact of the people looking at how am I going to pay and how am I going to stay in my house and the countless sleepless hours they must be enduring, and this is the board that is authorized and delegated certain powers that no other body is. So if I asked in their opinion about the town's evaluations and their assessment of properties, which is the only thing under their purview, I'm sorry if I was pressing if fifty people fill the audience on a Tuesday at two-thirty, if that was not, you know, for protocol or I wasn't treating members of certain other elected bodies fairly. I think that there is a certain gravity to this situation that maybe is evading some people, and I certainly don't want to be among those because this is really affecting in a major way people's lives. So that is why I asked the question, and I think they have responsibility as an elected body to at least come up with a determination initially. Investigation will show what the investigation will show, but again, when six hundred people show up for a tax, you know, a tax hearing for a Board of Selectment meeting that has to be moved, I think something is awry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alonso, for those comments. I don't have any comments this morning or this evening, any public comments from the public? Yes, Mr. Luck.
Carl Luck, I'll try to speak up at this meeting, Fifty Sunset Lane. First, I'd like to express my appreciation for Mr. Alonso's concern and passion and his efforts in supporting the people on this effort and getting to the bottom of this. So I really do appreciate that, and I know I'm not alone. Secondly, there's one question that people are spending too much time that I'm talking to in a confusion that I think the board could clarify for everyone's sake very quickly tonight or some other point, and the question is, who does the assessor work for? My next thing is along the, I heard the term tonight for the first time, the investigation team, and that effort that I know is ongoing, we all do. Several questions I'd like to get clarification at some point, it's not question and answer, but at some point should be clarified for the people, is first, who is on it? You know, what is the charter? Hopefully, there's something written down, what their mission is. And thirdly, are they going to comply with open meeting law? That's it. Thank you.
Okay. So I can, first, I'll go to the Town Manager to answer the question of who does the assessor work for, just to provide that clarification.
The principal assessor is appointed by the Town Manager and ratified by the Board of Assessors.
Does he answer the question?
Okay. And so the, I mean, that's the process as outlined in the, in the Charter. The assessor is certainly an employee of the town, and the role of the Board of Assessors is outlined in the Charter. I don't have it in front of me. So, okay. Next question is who's on the investigative? So the Select Board underneath the Charter has the authority to initiate investigations, and the Select Board exercised that authority. I am the principal investigator, supported by the Vice Chair, Mr. Alonso, and also Town Manager, Heather Lemieux. So we've also, in our public document, our release that we provided last week, identified that we are also bringing in outside independent assessors who can also assist in this process. So, you know, I think what's, what's critical here is to have people who do this for a living, who have municipal experience as assessors, be able to come in and take a look at what was done and provide us feedback, and I think we need to have a couple of people to be able to do that, and that way we get, you know, feedback from different parties on the process. You know, I think next week when we provide our update, we can give a little bit more on process and kind of core questions, but, you know, broadly speaking, you know, investigation takes multiple phases and stages. So the first stage is planning the investigation. We've come up with a document that is, I think fifteen pages, but several of the pages are blank, so, and they're just placeholders, but we've outlined a framework that, that reviews kind of our projections for a lot of different things. We have core questions, questions underneath those core questions. So the first phase is establishing kind of with those rules. I think we've successfully done that. The phase that we're in now is the evidence gathering phase, and, and that's when, you know, it's a lot of data that you have to collect, a lot of interviews that need to be conducted. In this time, conversations with Mass D O R, conversations with the company that we work with to assist with the software that we utilize for assessments, again, engaging with other assessors who can come in and take a look at what was done. So I think that that portion of it, I know there's going to be some market analysis that also will be done, and I think the intent there is to be as thorough, as detailed as possible. The next phase of that is analyzing that data, establishing facts supported by evidence. So, you know, once you've collected data, you've answered your core questions, you know, you need to be able to establish what's true, and you need to prove what's true is true. And then, you know, we'll move into a phase of being able to identify in a timeline kind of those key points at which an interruption would have had an influence on the overall outcome, that what you want to see in a timeline is where were those critical points where something would have happened differently, and outcome would have been different. And so that's one portion of it, and then it's also just looking broadly, not just at a timeline, but looking broadly to see, you know, in three hundred years, we haven't seen, almost three hundred years, we haven't found ourselves in this position. So what are those things and those controls we can do to make sure that this doesn't happen again and that those controls are implemented? So that's the general framework of just about every investigation, but it's certainly the framework that we are going to follow. So the charge of the investigation is found in the actual motion that we made to, to conduct the investigation. That is kind of the scope, so to speak, of what it is that we are, again, charged with, but again, there are core questions. I think at this point, we've identified ten core questions and, I don't know, probably twenty or thirty sub-questions underneath them. Of course, everything complies with open meeting law, but as, as we are meeting as a group, which is less than two, no, they're not public meetings in the sense of they're not posted discussions. There's a lot of interaction that's happening on the daily basis between, between all of us. I wouldn't say all of us, between those on the investigative team. You know, Heather and I, I know, are checking in every morning, every lunch, every afternoon, every evening, so there's a lot of interaction that's happening. Our intent is to be very forward with providing information to the public. We've identified that we will be giving an update on the seventh, and that we will provide updates twice a month until the investigation is complete. So we want to make sure that the public is aware of the work that's being done and kind of where we're at in the process. I think it's important to not be conclusive, and so I know that one thing I will be careful of is making sure that the updates do not provide conclusions, because we're not, you know, that's inappropriate, and conclusions are obviously the last phase of the process. So I hope that gives some clarity to the question that was asked.
And I, I just wanted to add, Mr. Luck, that that was at last week's meeting, so if you wanted to look at last week's meeting, I believe that was when the charge was, correct? Yeah.
When we read it.
Okay.
The update as well. Okay. Are there any other public comments from the public?
Mr. McDonald, I think he has his hand.
Yeah, we have someone on Zoom who'd like to speak. Mr. McDonald.
Good evening. It's very sad for me to be here tonight talking to you, but here it goes. I want, first of all, I just want to say that on January third, I approached your board, I was the only one in the audience, and brought this to your attention, and a lot of people were listening. That week went through, and then on the tenth, I know you had a meeting at the, down there at the Town Hall, which was approximately four hundred people. We still didn't get any kind of answers, or there was still a lot of confusion going on. At that point, we had a lot of friends, and I'm very happy to be associated with the people of Lunenburg. So I'm going to read you a written statement that we have after giving you a.
Mr. McDonald, I will advise that public comments, I am limiting them tonight to three minutes, so.
Yeah, I'll be done in three minutes, Mr. Chair. We have worked with some concerned citizens in Lunenburg Lakes who have banded together to offer some coordinated assistance. Among other things, we put together an abatement workshop. Now we have, now we have want to help take the next step. When we put together that workshop, we knew on the tenth that nothing was happening. People were getting frustrated because, one, they didn't get their tax bills until the twelfth to the fourteenth. When they tried to do a abatement, their tax information on the computer was behind. The assessor was out on paternity leave. So anyways, we got together and we formed a group, a group of concerned citizens. It's been clear that we don't understand how or why the principal assessor came up with these variations. After his presentation at the high school, we still left with some questions, and getting answers has been difficult. Currently, our mission is to help those affected with the drastic tax increase in Lunenburg due to the two thousand twenty-three property assessments. I am proud to say that we have formed a committee. It's called the Lunenburg Lake Action Committee. We have joined forces with Hickory Hills, Lake Shirley, and Lake Whalen. We've been out there helping people get through the abatement process. We've got no support from the town on that, by the way. We passed out flyers at the senior center. We were told to take them down. So anyways, we formed this committee. I'm very proud to say who was on this committee. Representing Lake Hickory Hills would be John and Donna Fortune. Representing Lake Shirley would be Joanna Valada. Representing Lake Whalen is Robyn Crowe. On the committee with us is Bill and June Hudson, Tim Murphy, Jay Simeone, Betsy Marsharelli, Rich Pearson, Paula Bertram, Lynn Walsh, Andrew Storm, and Betty and myself. I want to give a big thank you to all those people who have been working so hard, so diligently, listens to stories of people how they're going to lose their homes, listen to the stories how they can't even get food. You talk to the representatives, they're giving you snap cards. That's, that's just unbelievable. So tomorrow morning, there will be an email sent out to all these people who live on the lake. That's going to be from the Lunenburg Lake Action Committee. For further information, and I hope people at home can write this email down, it's luneburg, L U N E U I G dash lakes, L A K E S, at Google, G O O G L E, excuse me, Google Groups, G R O U P S dot com. Any questions at all, please send them to us. We also retain an attorney, and we're going to be looking for financial assistance from some people. That will all be laid out in the email that you're all going to get tomorrow morning. I want to thank everybody who's been working hard to try to help one another and the citizens in this town. And what, Ms. Soroka, what you said is totally beyond, it's just totally beyond. I don't understand the reasoning. I do want to thank Tom Alonso for being there, for showing support today. Those are some of the questions, and you know what? I still don't know who CJ works for. Maybe someone can explain that, and I guess the question would be, does he work for Heather or does he work for himself? Because obviously, he must be working for himself after what I saw today. So I want to thank the board for this, and again, thank you to everybody in town who's been helping us help you, and we're there for you. We're not, we're not going to die down on this one. This tax rate is the worst thing that could ever happen to this town, and for anyone who sits there and thinks differently, there's a problem. So again, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair and the board.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Do we have any other public comments this evening from the public? All right. Any announcements tonight?
No.
Okay. Communications from other boards. I will come back to that because I know that we did get some. I will come back to communications from other boards. We do not have any scheduled appointments tonight, but we do have interviews, reappointments, and resignations, so to the Town Manager.
The first is a ratification of my appointment of two civilian traffic members, and they are Dan Bourgeois and A.J. Robichaud. So I'll read the chief's letter. As we prepare for the upcoming detail season, we receive applications for two additional candidates for the civilian traffic member unit. The first candidate is retired Lunenburg Police Department Chief of Police, Dan Bourgeois. Chief Bourgeois served with distinction for over thirty years with the Lunenburg Police Department, retiring in two thousand twelve. Chief Bourgeois retired in good standing with the department and meets all of the requirements to become a member of the unit. The second candidate is Aaron A.J. Robichaud, who is current, a current full-time firefighter with the Lemonster Fire Department. A.J. is a firefighter in good standing and meets all the requirements to become a member of the unit. All of the required paperwork has been submitted to the H R Director, Julie Beliveau, and I respectfully request these two appointments to be effective January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. So that obviously date has passed, and therefore to be effective tomorrow, February first.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that presentation. I mean, I know I will make a comment. You know, when I was in eighth grade, I volunteered to be a peer counselor, and Chief Bourgeois was, was the one who kind of led this effort, and when I was in high school, for three years, I was a peer counselor, which was rather fun, but our trainings were with Chief Bourgeois, who certainly is a, you know, great guy. So it's really good to hear. I know he's retired and lives nearby, so it's good to hear that he's interested in kind of providing some more support. That's a great thing. Any comments or questions from the board regarding the Town Manager's request for the Select Board to ratify the appointment of Daniel Bourgeois and Aaron Robichaud as civilian traffic members?
Mr. Chair, I will just comment, having worked with Mr., or ex-Chief Bourgeois for many years, and he was an asset to the town then, and I'm glad to see him coming back to serve in this capacity, and I'm more than happy to support him and A.J. Robichaud.
All right. Any, is there a motion to approve?
Move that we ratify the Town Manager's appointment of civilian traffic members Daniel Bourgeois and Aaron A.J. Robichaud.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right, we're going to do a roll call vote as we have a member on Zoom, Selectwoman Soroka.
Aye.
Selectman Dwyer.
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
I think that was an aye.
Did he call?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Selectman Alonso?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. So the motion passes unanimously. Please give our congratulations to Chief Bourgeois and Mr. Robichaud.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going backwards a little bit to communications from other boards. So there's two requests that we received. One was, well, one request, one just informative. So the library is reaching out to inquire about the status of approval with the town. I think they sent an email over probably about a month or so ago to the finance office, and they're just looking for an update on, on where we're at. So I'll follow up with you offline, Heather, about that, because that's usually something you and I would talk about offline anyway, but I know we have it under communications from other boards. And then the second thing is, we had noted to the Conservation Commission, they had mentioned to us that they were looking at reviewing their properties, and so they did, you know, want to, and they did send out letters to abutters with potential encroachments. So that's something that they are working with members on. So so far, they've been successful in being able to resolve encroachment concerns directly with residents without, I mean, we've had issued legal letters, but without there being any kind of court action. So in this case, we did issue legal letters and trusting that they will be successful also in working with residents to resolve those issues.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you, I just, I didn't follow the library request. They're talking about the library trust funds.
The trust funds.
Okay, it was the trust funds.
Yes.
And as far as I know, I think that's progressing.
Yeah. It's been progressing. A lot of work has happened, but I think that there's just a final kind of push now, I think, from the broker they've decided, Edward Jones. I think they were just looking for some data. So I can talk to you offline about it because I do have more information on it. All right. Okay. Town Manager report, as we say the, some of the best parts of our meeting. So to the Town Manager.
All right. Before we move on.
If you're tired of reading, we can jump in here.
No. Two things I was going to bring up during interviews, appointments, and resignations were two vacancies that are going to, in my report tonight. We had two resignations, one from the Assistant Town Accountant, she took a position in another town as a town accountant, and the Principal Clerk in the Collector's Office resigned.
Wow, okay. She just resigned?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so I mean, that's.
Those are noted in my report, so I just wanted to make that clear to the board.
Thank you.
So appointment, sorry, announcement of existing vacancies. There are five vacancies on the three-hundredth Anniversary Committee, one vacancy on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, which we do have one talent bank form, which we will try to schedule for next week, two vacancies on the Council on Aging, one vacancy on the Finance Committee, one associate vacancy on the Green Communities Committee, two vacancies on the Historical Commission, one Member-at-Large vacancy on Open Space Committee, and one associate vacancy in the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested can fill out a volunteer application form on the town website and return them to the Select Board's office. And any questions on any of these roles and responsibilities, you can contact nine-seven-eight-five-eight-two-four-one-three-zero, extension one-four-four.
May I just interrupt for a moment? So by my count, this is, I think, fourteen different vacancies, so if I can just do a plug here for anyone who's watching our meetings. I know that being a public servant does not always look fun on the other side. Mostly it's, mostly it's just this board, but, you know, for the most part, you know, what I would offer is, these are some really important roles. You know, three-hundredth Anniversary Committee, you know, that's, that's obviously a positive environment, but, you know, five vacancies there. You know, the APDC has a lot of authority over what. and they're the regulatory approving body for changes that occur on people's homes that live in the center-of-town area in the village district. So that's a really important board. Anyone with any experience in buildings or preservation, please apply. Council of Aging is another board that has two vacancies. Extremely important. Significant percentage of our town is made up of seniors. And this board is really focused on looking at the 55-plus age group and identifying different program needs that are really important and vital to them. Finance Committee. Finance Committee advises town meeting on the budget that's proposed, as well as other issues. They also are the committee that really meets with all the department heads to go over all the requests that come through in the form of the budget. So having a vacancy there is an area where, you know, really important to get that filled. Green Communities Committee. I think that that kind of speaks for itself. But, you know, certainly, anyone who has any experience there, we have a vacancy there. Historical Commission. Two vacancies on that board, and that becomes quite the challenge. Open Space Committee, one member on that board. And then the Zoning Board of Appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals has the authority to, as a first line, consider residents or businesses' request for zoning changes. And so again, this is another board where it's extremely important to have full membership, and we do have an associate vacancy there. So again, I know Heather has mentioned this every week, but, you know, we have 14 vacancies on open positions. If anyone at all is interested, please complete a voluntary application form. And as Heather noted, reach out to the town manager's office. Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome. Current employment opportunities for the town. There is an administrative assistant for IT, which is a part-time, non-benefited position. Administrative assistant for the Police Department, which is a part-time, non-benefited position. Assistant Town Accountant, which is a part-time, benefited position. Heavy Equipment Operator, which is a full-time, benefited position. Library Assistance, which is part-time, non-benefited positions. Tax Collector Principal Clerk, which is a full-time, benefited position. Production Technician, part-time, benefited position. Recreation Director, which is a part-time, non-benefited position. Seasonal Lifeguards, we're advertising for those right now. Those are seasonal positions. And Beach Director, also a seasonal position at the town beach. And Videographer for Public Access, which is a part-time, non-benefited position.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Update on 51 Parmenter Road. If you, the board recalls, we, the board gave permission to do a right-of-entry for work to be done. The abutters needed to access their property for septic repair through town property. I asked the DPW Director to go look at the property, make sure it was left in good condition, as was part of the condition for use, which it was. The fence that was on the property was removed. So I just wanted to update the board on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Some facilities and grounds, projects and repairs. The public safety building chiller project is complete. The repair to the sprinkler system at the TCP is scheduled for February. And recently, repairs to the roof were done above the public access room. There were leaks coming in through the roof there, so those were repaired. The town beach building project was awarded and will begin shortly. The 30th School Street site visit was today, and 10 companies were present, which was a very good sign. So as I responded to Mr. Dunnett's, that hopefully that was reflected in the bids that we received, will be receiving.
That's a good turnout.
Yes, a very good turnout. So those bids are due on February 16th. The rebranding for the Senior Center. I show you the new logo in the report. It is now the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center. That was part of their rebranding to try to engage more younger seniors and taking the senior out of the wording. So this is their new logo that was developed by the Lunenburg Business Association. And the Eagle House Senior Center Facebook page has been changed to this title as well, Lunenburg Adult Activity Center. And they've, through the Council on Aging Director, have had good response to this new logo.
Now Lou won't feel a certain way when he goes to the Adult Activity Center.
Trash and Recycling update. Not sure if everyone saw this post, but at the end of the calendar year into the new year, E.L. Harvey, the town's trash and recycling contractor, had various difficulties resulting in delayed trash pickups. The town notified E.L. Harvey in writing of their contractual obligations to provide a high level of service. In response, E.L. Harvey formulated a comprehensive plan to improve their operations and overcome the challenges that have resulted in the delays. The plan, which should be fully implemented by mid-February, includes opening a new repair shop in Lemonster, hiring more mechanics, obtaining additional backup trucks, and hiring more drivers and managers. The town is committed to provide improved service to the residents and businesses of Lunenburg. Therefore, will continue to monitor E.L. Harvey's performance. So we'll be checking in with them according to their plan to have everything in place by mid-February. It should be noted that there have been no complaint calls in the last few weeks, so their plan seems to be addressing the issues. As a reminder, the town encourages residents to report all trash and recycling incidents to E.L. Harvey at 1-800-321-3002. The DPW at 978-582-4160. And Jamie Toll, who's the town's Trash and Recycling Coordinator/Consultant at 617-365-4612, so that we may quickly resolve the issues.
I'm going to, if I could, may I ask Heather on two questions? So the first is, by my memory, their contract is up next summer. Is that right?
Next June 30th, yes.
Okay. And then, you know, as we head towards that deadline, I know that we've talked about, and I've, a resident reached out to me as well about stickers. And they told me that there was some social media post about it, which of course I haven't seen. But the question was, you know, why can't we go to a sticker method? So that way, we can, you know, people don't have to keep buying these bags. I know we've talked about that previously. And then the other question or comment that was made was that the quality of the bags, especially the larger bags, seems to be low right now.
So as, when those issues have come up in the past, we've asked those people to notify us, and we work with our bag vendor, it's a separate vendor. And they can return the rolls and get replacement rolls if there are defective rolls. So if that's the case, they should be contacting the town about that. There's been no change in the product specifications. So, you know, the millimeter, anything like that, that hasn't changed. But people should be abiding by the weight restrictions that are on the bags. So this, obviously, if you overstuff your bags, they're going to rip.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As a participant in the program, I would say that the largest of the three-size bags have never been a problem. And I don't think the smallest ones have ever been a problem. It's just the medium ones. I do recall that there was a change, because I had complained many, many months over a year that they didn't fit a regular trash bag, and you had to stretch them. So that actually has been changed.
The dimensions.
The dimensions, right.
But not the millimeter thickness or anything.
Right. But a lot of people were ripping them because they couldn't put them over the barrel. So that has actually been remedied. And also, people were complaining about the weak drawstring. They would draw it, and it would tear. And that has seemed to remedy itself too. So those two, from my personal experience with the late, in the last few months, has improved. That they do fit the trash barrel without stretching them and therefore ripping them. And when you take them out, even if you're following the weight, you know, limits, that the old bags would still tear when you went to the drawstring. So the drawstring became useless. Now they have not done that. Again, anecdotal, my personal experience with them.
Right. Are we still, I know that we had talked about providing bags for seniors, small bags at the Senior Center. Is that, was that just the first year that we were doing that? I don't remember what we had decided.
Yes, I think that was like a pilot, a dead pilot. Yeah. So that hasn't been, that was for that period of time.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. What are these sticker things you speak of?
So the stickers are, it's another way of collecting trash. Basically, everyone, you buy a sticker. And so whatever bag you put out, you put a sticker on the bag.
So you buy the sticker instead of the bag?
You buy the sticker instead of the bag.
So you have to buy the sticker and still pay for the service and buy the bag?
Okay, so how?
But you can get bags that don't fall apart.
So how would they know that you had a sticker on your bag if you put your bag in a trash barrel?
They won't.
No, you put it on the outside.
You just put it on the outside?
You have the sticker on the outside.
So you could leave a sticker on the outside of your barrel for?
Well, it wouldn't be by barrel, it'd be by bag.
There have been a lot of issues. I know we had talked about it previously. There's a lot of reasons when we were discussing this last time that went into keeping with the bag system, because I know we talked about that. Do you want to add any?
Yeah, without looking back at all the pros and cons, one of the people promoting, you know, recycling would say that it reduces the amount of recycling. But not, so people will use more trash, basically, versus recycling, because if it's sticker-based, not bag size-based.
I follow you. So we're going to have this conversation, I know, as we kind of go into six months out from this, when we do the whole RFP process again. And so I know we'll have this conversation later in the year about how we're going to try to support the community with trash.
Wait, when is there, when are they up? This June or next June?
In a year from June.
A year, okay, okay.
Oh, June of '24.
Right, yeah, okay.
So we'll have this, as I recall, we'll probably have the conversation end of this year, going into January, February of next year. Okay, I'm sorry for all these interruptions, Heather.
It's all right.
All right.
All right. Stormwater Asset Management Grant update. The Land Use Director, DPW Director, and I attended a kickoff meeting with CEI, which is, who is our consultant that will be doing all the work for the Stormwater Asset Management Grant. This meeting was on January 25th. So field data collection is tentatively scheduled to begin in March, according to the meeting we had with CEI. And just for a description of the project, it's to develop a complete asset inventory for Lunenburg's stormwater system that expands and completes the asset inventory and creates a framework to perform and track inspections of key assets. So this is moving forward. Department head updates from land use. The Planning Board has a hearing on February 13th for three commercial buildings at 1325 Mass Ave. Lunenburg Central is wrapping up their construction and will be signing leases with tenants that will be responsible for fitting out the interior spaces of the building with a plan to be occupied by spring summertime. This will mean that more building permits will be pulled as tenants are secured, and the value of the space will change as it is further developed. Lunenburg Central approached the town about filing a site readiness grant from Mass Development on potentially getting engineered designs for upgrading Lemonster Shirley Road, specifically the intersections at Reservoir and Pond, Fort Pond Roads. The Site Readiness Program administered by Mass Development aims to increase the Commonwealth's inventory of large, well-located, project-ready sites and to accelerate private sector investment in industrial, commercial, and mixed-use projects. They are still looking at purchasing property from PJ Keating to construct a 600,000 square foot to 1 million square foot warehouse and realize the importance of making improvements to that corridor. So that's a to-be continued discussion. That application would require endorsement by the town.
1325 Mass Ave is, where is the nearest across? Oh, it's right on Townsend Harbor, right next to Townsend Harbor Road. The one that he's, earth, the earth removal permit? Okay.
Wait, I'm a little confused by that question.
I was wondering where 1325 Mass Ave is. The first sentence, that they have three commercial buildings.
Got it.
Assessors, they have been extremely busy with foot traffic emails and calls related to assessments and filing abatements. From Council on Aging, the Council on Aging Director announced that the CPR AED training on Thursday, February 16th, is almost full. And as usual, the center has a multitude of programs going on in February that are announced in the newsletter, the ledger, and their Facebook page. They're currently down one van driver due to a non-work-related injury. From the Fire Department, the Fire Department is currently down one ambulance as it was hit by another vehicle. The other driver was at fault, but the chief estimates that it may be a few months before the repairs are done to the ambulance.
Is this the one that we're looking to replace, or the other one?
No, the newer one.
Of course.
Yes. Treasure Collector, tax bills are due February 1st. From the DPW, the director reported that there were seven snow and ice events in January, and the crews were busy this month with downed trees. They will be interviewing two candidates for the vacant equipment operator position. The three-quarter-ton pickup truck was received in January, but the director received notice from Allegiance Trucks that the six-wheel dump truck and the 10-wheel dump truck delivery date is being pushed out further with expected delivery in January and March of 2024, respectively. International Trucks cut production in 2023 by 54% due to supply chain issues, specifically frame rails and brake systems. Allegiance Trucks was oversold by 200 trucks, which has further caused delays. This year, we have had to rely more on contractors, which had a budgetary impact. So that will be seen in the snow and ice budget this year. And we'll start reporting on regular reports on the overage. This past month, the DPW Director applied for a free solar-powered combination dynamic speed feedback and school zone speed limit sign assemblies through Mass DOT's safe routes to schools. The signs would go on Oak Ave in the designated school zone for the middle school, high school, and Turkey Hill Elementary School.
Can I have a question? Who controls those signs? Is it the schools, or is it DPW, as far as the flashing speed limit signs?
The school, I believe. They have access codes to those.
Yeah, they're not on time, right? They're not timed properly.
Yeah, so my comment is exactly that, that the timing might be.
I'll verify that, but I believe that's.
Yeah, the timing's a little off. And if we can just remind them to turn them off when there's school vacations, that'd be helpful. Okay?
From Public Access, Public Access has been filming the school basketball games. They're also looking into permanent solutions in order to livestream meetings and through Zoom at the middle school, high school auditorium. This will be, needs to be an issue that's addressed by both IT and Public Access to work on together for what equipment is needed to make a permanent solution for that. From the Finance Director, 1099s were completed by the deadline. From the Police Department, the police chief reported there were 27,000 calls for service, 3,500 motor vehicle stops, and 400 arrests in 2022. Notable was the increase in mental health-related calls. Officer Josh Matthew has been promoted to the vacant detective position. And Officer Jack Wagner will be the next K-9 officer once K-9 Jerry retires. From the Library, the library director reported From the Library, the Library Director reported that they are working on the final details of transferring the library trust funds from the town to the financial advisor chosen by the trustees. And the library has been busy with programs and being open on Fridays has been one of their busiest times.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes.
I have a question on the K-nine. Is the plan to replace the K-nine with another kind of similar-type canine dog? Or are they looking to make a change there? Do we know?
I think they're looking to make a change where it won't be a German Shepherd, just another type of, it could be a bloodhound-type dog, but they're exploring.
Okay.
For the breeds.
Okay, so we'll get more information before they, because I know that that wasn't a capital plan that we had approved, but I recall the photo of being a German Shepherd.
Yeah, it was Jerry.
Yep.
Picture Jerry.
So I think if we're going to make some changes there, we might want to hear about them first.
Yes. In Meetings Events, another announcements. The next public hearing for Pondview Commons is on February eighth at seven PM at the Town Hall. The Annual Town Meeting Ward is open for submission of articles until March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at four PM. And articles must be submitted to the Select Board's Office in writing. And the Annual Town Meeting is Saturday, May sixth at nine AM at the Lunenburg Middle High School.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you for all of my interruptions. Are there any questions for the Town Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the town beach building project. What exactly are they doing at the building?
So the project includes replacing the front wall closest to the road, some interior work, because that was all demoed inside, including the ceiling and the walls and minor electrical, because there's not much electrical.
And that'll be, that'll be ready for the beach this year?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's part of their contract.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions for the Town Manager regarding the Town Manager's report? Okay, alright Heather, I know you might need to drink some water here because you've got like three things coming or two more. Alright, so next we will hear the Town Manager's presentation of the capital plan. And then following, we'll get an update on capital plan projects from years prior to this year.
Okay.
Alright. And while you pull that up, I know I plugged all of the boards and encouraged people to apply. But of course, we want the government to act in a way that's responsive to people. So I just want to highlight that we have several vacancies currently for Beach Director, Seasonal Lifeguards, Recreation Director. You know, those things impact summer, they impact children a lot. On PAC, I know that we have a lot of interest in public meetings being videoed. And so we do have an opening for a videographer, for a production technician, and then also administrative roles within the town that, that we all care about getting done. So please check out the town website for those jobs. And if you have some skillsets that seem to fit, please submit an application.
Alright, so on to the capital plan. And this is a preliminary recommendation. So we'll start off with what qualifies as a capital project. For most everyone's familiar with our policy, but our policy defines capital expenditures as capital items that are cost twenty thousand or more and have a useful life of three years or longer. It's also defined by Mass Association of Town Finance Committees as major non-recurring expenditures for such things as acquisition of land for a public purpose, construction of a new facility, sewer lines, roads, playing fields, any planning feasibility, engineering, or design study related to a capital project, equipment for public improvements, and major equipment, which is expensive and has relatively long life, such as fire apparatus and construction equipment. Discussion on the process, the Capital Planning Committee is the committee that creates a capital plan that consists of all the capital requests submitted by each of the town departments. For the next ten fiscal years are, we're only required to do five per our charter, but we go out ten years for capital planning purposes. The Capital Planning Committee's first meeting was on August third this year. And the capital planning documents were sent to the departments in September. And all the capital planning, the Capital Planning Committee met with all the departments from late October until the end of November. This year, I transitioned the forms to the same software we use for budgeting, which is ClearGov. And all of the relevant information was submitted through this platform. The data collected is based on the UMass Collins Center Capital Planning Documents. That includes various categories such as effectiveness of government, the effect on operating costs, effect on revenues, whether the project is mandated by the state or federal government, whether grant funds are available, and how the project makes certain contributions, such as to things as economic growth, public safety, public health, and education. We also included this year preliminary planning category for a rating. Each category receives a rating and an overall score based on the aggregate score of all the categories. So higher the rating, the higher the priority. The Capital Planning Committee evaluates these capital requests based on the responses to these categories. And as a group, the CPC reviews the merits of all the projects as well. And each member submits their ranking, and these are averaged to achieve a composite ranking. So this year, the Capital Planning Committee prioritized twenty-nine capital projects for fiscal twenty-four and provided this prioritized list to me on December twenty-eighth. The Town Manager may modify the capital projects as part of the proposed budget. And ultimately, this is voted at the annual town meeting. The plan tonight reflects the same projects as the Capital Planning Committee provided me on December twenty-eighth with certain differences in prioritization for some of the projects. Looking at fiscal twenty-four, there were twenty-nine capital projects, like I said earlier, totaling two million nine hundred and forty-one thousand ten dollars. And for facilities and grounds, that total was six hundred and thirty-five thousand for fiscal twenty-four. For the Fire Department, it was seven hundred and forty-eight, five hundred and ten dollars. For Public Works, it was six hundred and forty-eight thousand. For the School Department, it was nine hundred and nine thousand five hundred. And for that total of two million nine hundred and forty-one thousand ten dollars. Breaking it down by categories, so there, one percent of the requests were infrastructure, twenty-one percent were DPW, twenty-five percent were the Fire Department, twenty-two percent were facilities and grounds, and thirty-one percent of the requests were from the school. The recommendation tonight is for six projects totaling one million three hundred and sixty thousand five hundred. I'll go through the projects. The first priority project is for the replacement of Rescue One for five hundred and six thousand. And this is to replace the two thousand fourteen ambulance. This is based on maintenance costs, wear and tear of the current ambulance, the increased use, and the lifespan is projected at ten years. The average delivery time is currently near two years from the date of order. That's an important reason why this was moved up in the years on the capital plan. The ambulance has its reasonable lifespan. The replacement will increase efficiencies and effectiveness, reduce potential liabilities, contributes to public safety and public health and well-being of the community. Second priority is for the Turkey Hill Exterior Door Upgrades Replacement for a hundred and sixty thousand. This request is for the installation of a new vestibule that will require visitors to be buzzed in through two sets of doors to create a more enhanced, more reliable security system. The door replacement must be done before security access control upgrades. The current doors are over their reasonable lifespan. The project will reduce liabilities and threats, adds and expands customer service, and contributes to public safety and aesthetics. The third priority is for the Turkey Hill Security Upgrades for a hundred and thirty-one thousand. This request is to upgrade the door access controls and alarm keypads to match the Lunenburg Middle High School. And this will eliminate the passcodes and replace with access cards. Also, it'll be installation of additional security cameras at all the exterior doors, other interior areas in the playground, and it will also add additional motion detectors. The equipment is at its reasonable lifespan. It increases effectiveness and efficiencies, reduces potential liabilities and threats, adds and expands customer service, and contributes to education and public safety. The fourth priority is for the Primary School Security Upgrades for eighty-three thousand five hundred for all the same description and justification as the previous slide for Turkey Hill. The fifth priority is for the replacement of six-wheel dump spreader and plow truck for the DPW at two hundred and forty thousand. This request is for a new six-wheel dump truck, spreader, plow, to replace the unusable two thousand eight International Six-Wheel Dump Truck. This, which is, has a blown motor and is currently decommissioned. There are seven snowplow routes. Each snowplow route needs a large truck with a salt spreader and plow. And we only have seven of these trucks. Therefore, replacement of these trucks are vital to snow and ice operations. And I have a future slide which goes over how many trucks we have in service and how many are out of service right now, which is an important part of the plan. This vehicle is over the reasonable lifespan. Replacing it would increase effectiveness and efficiencies, reduce potential liabilities and threats. It'd decrease our costs if replaced and contributes to public safety. The sixth priority is for a second six-wheel dump truck for two hundred and forty thousand. This is to replace the two thousand six International Six-Wheel Dump Truck, which is in poor condition and is also decommissioned. For the same reasons, this vehicle is over the reasonable lifespan. Replacing it would increase effectiveness and efficiencies, reduce potential liabilities, threats, and decrease costs if it's replaced and would contribute to public safety. This slide, I requested this after presenting last week to the Finance Committee. Just goes to show how many trucks we use for snow and ice operations. And we're currently, four of our seven trucks are out of service. So two of those trucks I spoke of earlier in my Town Manager Report are on order, which we keep getting delays on delivery. So things out of our control with supply chain issues. But it further exacerbates the problem with making sure that we have enough vehicles for snow and ice operations. And by further delaying any, the purchases on the fiscal twenty-four plan for two new trucks is going to really compound the issue as well. So capital requests that are not included in the preliminary recommendation tonight, there are twenty-three additional projects. And that total is one million five hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Getting back to the six projects being recommended tonight, the reason I am only recommending six projects at this time is to reserve the use of free cash at this time due to the current tax assessment issue and what we will potentially need to, for the overlay account to handle the abatements. Once we get more and more information, I hope to make further recommendations in the plan and hopefully we can add additional projects going forward. But at this time, I'm taking a conservative approach to know what the town can financially contribute to the capital plan at this point in time. So as you'll see, three hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and nine cents from the tax levy. Nothing from free cash at this time to reserve that for any impact to the overlay needed at the annual town meeting. Seventeen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-one cents has, is clearly been identified as unexpendited capital that we can reappropriate. There'll likely, there will be more added to that, two more capital projects I'll speak of on the next item on the agenda can be closed out. That's an additional four thousand, but as we move forward in projects, we'll add to that number. And nine hundred and eighty-six thousand from the special purpose stabilization account. And that's specifically for the replacement of the Rescue One and the two dump trucks. And I'll get into that. So that Special Purpose Stabilization Fund was created at the Annual Town Meeting in two thousand seventeen. And the whole purpose was to, for vehicles and equipment. And this was, as noted on the slide used at that Annual Town Meeting, based on future capital needs, our need to purchase large-ticket items. So clearly, the Rescue ambulance and the two large trucks are large-ticket items. Looking ahead, capital requests for the next ten years. Obviously, these slides are very hard to read, but it's just to demonstrate the number of projects that we have going out the next ten years for each of the departments. And I have included on one of the slides a link to that spreadsheet. So you can, if you, anyone who wants to look at that can view all the, all the projects going out the next ten years. It's hard to demonstrate on a worksheet that, that size. So the next slide, this is a breakdown of our requests on the very top table for each of the fiscal years. And I just noted what we've spent on average for capital. Our five-year average is one point six-two million, our three-year average is one point six-three million. For going over the next ten years, we have project requests totaling thirty-five point four-seven million at this point in time. Obviously, this is a document that's changed every year, so it's always updated. So new requests come on and off as we go forward, but at this point in time, that's that amount. So if our, our funding remains consistent, we wouldn't be funding about nineteen point five million of capital requests. But I do want to note, a large percentage of that number are related to Turkey Hill and TC Passios. So depending on what we do for an outcome on those buildings, there'll be likely borrowing projects, so that would be fitting that into our debt schedule going forward. So next steps would be to reevaluate the fiscal twenty-four capital plan from now until town meeting to see if there's any additional funding to go towards the capital projects that are not on the recommendation tonight. And to revisit the funding sources if free cash is available to be appropriated. We should continue to plan on using the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund in future years as there are large vehicle equipment needs, unless there are sufficient funds from tax levy, free cash, or unexpendited capital to pay for those. And the decisions of the future of Turkey Hill and TCP and involved space uses are still a critical part of our whole capital planning process, which as those evolve and decisions are made, we need to address those. Are there any questions?
Or comments?
I just have a question about the Brooks House. Where does that fall as well? Is that also part of the Turkey Hill TC Passios or is that completely separate? There's a bunch of projects on there right at the bottom.
There are a number of projects related to the Brooks. Some were on, let me get back to. As you see on this slide, it's the ones, the capital requests not included in the preliminary. There are a number of projects there that were requested for fiscal twenty-four, as well as there were some in outlier years as well. So that's definitely is still a question that needs to be answered as far as the use of that building and what's the long-term need for it.
Alright, any other questions, comments?
I will comment that, so when, two things. First of all, the vehicles and the use of the special, I'm not against using the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. However, as we just indicated in the DPW's department update, that two of the trucks that we've previously ordered have now got pushed down till next year. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be prudent to use the ARPA funds to purchase the rescue vehicle and the two trucks now. That would save us six months before we can order it if we wait the town meeting. That six months is going to be critical if we have a backlog. And we have four trucks now that are out of commission out of seven. That is not a good place to be, obviously. And whatever we can do to expedite that timeline, we probably should look into. I mean, six months is a long time to get a head start, so I would just talk to the board about that. And the other comment I want to make is when the Town Manager, in, in the past, we've looked at two-million-dollar capital plans and everything, and we were poised to do the same until the whole tax situation happened. Because if the abatements happen in the way that they potentially can, that money is going to be lost. And we're going to be spending a lot of money on hiring all the new staff to help through the abatement. So that's how the, this tax situation not only affects residences, but it potentially can really significantly impact the town, and that's how.
I know we have Mr. Franco on Zoom, but currently we have the screen up. So let's go back to Mr. Franco. Mr. Franco, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Franco.
But is ARPA, are we, would we be able to use ARPA funds on the vehicles?
Yes, I think, I think there's a question though about how we pay ourselves back. So in other words, like if ARPA, you know, this board can commit funds for ARPA, but only town meeting can commit funds from free cash, right? So that's, that is, I think, one of the complications is that if we commit, you know, five hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars from, you know, three point five or two that we have for ARPA. from, you know, 3.5 or two that we have for ARPA, do we get that money back? You know, that's not as straightforward. So town meeting would need to appropriate that money back, basically, to, to the select board to be able to utilize or commit those funds for something else. So once the, in other words, if we spend the $800,000
I got it. I get it.
Yeah. And I don't, it's not a, you know, it's, it's giving it to the capital planning committee, basically.
Right.
I went, I mean, that's
Which is basically our ARPA plan.
That's a large part, yeah.
Right? It is basically a capital plan.
Yeah.
I'm just pointing that out.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I think that, you know, to highlight a couple of things that were noted, you know, what, you know, in summary, I, I think that we, I care deeply about our roads. I care deeply about how, how they look, how they're, how passable and drivable they are. And I think that it's one of the things, one of the many things that our town, I think, does very well, is, is I think we do a good job maintaining our roads. So anything that's gonna do to support that, I mean, clearly what we're communicating is that, hey, we're spending a lot on contractors right now because we don't have the vehicles that we need, the vehicles that we ordered over a year ago, that now we're being told are gonna be, you know, take two years to come to us. And, you know, these things are, you know, you kind of put things on a plan to scatter them, but I think no one expects you're gonna order a vehicle and it's gonna take two years plus to get it.
That's crazy.
You know, and, and at the end of the day, what residents are gonna care about is, hey, you know, we get blamed, quite frankly, for what doesn't go well. And so it looks poorly on this board, on the town manager, and everyone, if suddenly our ability to do snow removal decreases. And even though these things are outside of our control, I think it, it's, it's bad all the way around, right? Not just for, you know, not personally for us, but it's bad for residents. It's a really bad thing. Because I think everyone has gotten accustomed to just how great of a job we do, the DPW does. I wouldn't say we, because I don't have nothing to do with snow removal. But it's a good job that DPW does with snow removal. So, other than that, you know, something I mentioned last year when we were going over the capital plan is that, you know, is that facilities are our biggest cost as a community. And I was a little disappointed last year at the small percentage of request. I think last year, we saw numbers closer to like 50% of requests were facility. But, you know, I think what they received was a very small percentage. So it's good to see that that has changed. And I think that, you know, the, the things that cost us the most money are the things that we need to continually invest in. I think that what's proposed in the capital plan certainly does that. Behind the scenes, I, it's not a, I think we all know this, but I'll say it publicly, you know, I did do a, because of my experience as a physical security officer in the military, I did do a walkthrough of the schools, all of them. And I made several recommendations to the schools, to the superintendent, and to the school committee directly, on things that I thought they needed to immediately change. And it's really comforting to see that a lot of the concerns that I raised and addressed were, were very quickly addressed. So that I think that's, that's a good collaboration between us and the school committee of, of being able to offer a skill set for their consideration. And then also, you know, obviously, this is what they do. They're very much aligned with us. So it's really good. I think that we had some good collaboration with them to get to this point at which we're improving school safety and security, as that seems to be a real big issue across our country these days. So that's really a good thing. And, and that, again, is an investment in a building and a property, which is also a good thing. So Heather, I think that this is a really smart, conservative plan. I mean, I certainly hope that, that, that we're gonna be able to utilize some funds for additional projects. I hope that we can get to that point sooner than later to identify what those are. Because again, you know, it is a loss for our community to be able to not use any free cash and, and use those funds to offset the need for additional abatements. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one question of the town manager? Was this the, the presentation that was done to the finance committee, or were there any changes?
The only change was the slide that I asked the DPW director on our
Otherwise, everything else?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay.
Because that question was raised, so I thought it was important information. So, and that information was shared with the finance committee, the, what the DPW director put up. I sent that out today to the board as well. Just wanna, one note is just, and this is, I don't want to speak for the capital planning committee, but I think we both addressed public safety issues at a higher priority. So I think that's what's, can be, that's a reflection of tonight's recommendation.
Yes.
For sure.
As chair of the capital planning committee, I mean, I haven't heard, I heard from one member who saw the presentation to the finance committee. But, yeah, I mean, I think this accurately reflects it. As we get further down in, in the things that didn't get funded, I have some questions, but I don't think we're gonna get down that far. So it's really not even worth note, you know, picking out the discrepancies.
All right. We have the privilege tonight of having select woman Luck with us. So I will turn to select woman Luck if you have any questions or comments about the capital
Thank you very much, Phyllis Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. I, I feel it's such a sad commentary on our society that our education funds need to be spent on security instead of educating. I mean, it, it's, it's appropriate. It's not your fault. But how sad that we're not hiring teachers and making the class sizes smaller. We're putting up ways to heat people out, you know. It's just a comment. And I also appreciate that you're saving so much money. You're not putting many capital items out because I do believe that there is going to be a lot of money needed for the rebates, the abatements that need to be funded, as well as the cost of the whole process of reassessment. And, you know, I think it's a long road ahead. And I thank you for your efforts. And I'm glad I'm not up there right now. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Phyllis. All right. To the town manager, do you need to take a water break? Do we need a?
No, I'm good, I think.
All right. So next on the agenda, any other questions, comments related to the capital plan? Okay. All right. So next, and then going into old business, we're going to
I just, I do have a question. Are we gonna consider what Mr. Alonso said in regards to ARPA funds? Or are we gonna talk about ARPA funds?
We're gonna talk about ARPA after
Separate, okay.
Yeah. So we can, we can consider what Mr. Alonso said tonight.
I'm just making sure.
All right. Status update on the capital plan projects for fiscal year '23 and prior. So this is a routine update that we've been doing, I think, every three months or so. And this is a look back of previous fiscal years, just getting updated on where we're at with outstanding capital projects. So to the town manager.
All right.
How far are we going back?
So we'll start with the oldest. So going back, and this is gonna maybe hard, I'll try to do the best I can with enlarging this font and readability. So we have items going back to 2005. But the 2005 one is essentially, it was a vote for borrowing. So it just needs, that remaining amount needs to be rescinded. So that's just a housekeeping cleanup issue. Fiscal '14, we've retained that amount, note for multiple years, knowing that the work was encompassed in the bid that is out currently for town hall, the chimney work. So that's $5,575. Those bids for the town hall project are due February 23. So that will be part of that. 2016, that can be closed out, $8,826. Fiscal '17, bulletproof vests for the police department, there was $17.67 left. That's, can be closed out for the fiscal 24 capital plan. These are all ones that identified as unexpendable capital in my capital plan presentation. The Townsend Harbor Bridge, there was a remaining amount of $5,100. That's being closed out at the annual town meeting for, as unexpendable capital. And from 2020 for the police department, patrol rifles and shotguns for $1,034. There is a remaining amount of $1,887 for the fuel tanks. There's a small amount of paving that needs to be addressed for drainage. So that's the DPW director asked to retain that until that's complete. The master plan, there was an original article in fiscal '20 for $50,000. They did to, they did the population update with a portion of that money, but retained that amount, knowing there was greater efficiencies and going out to bid for, to update all the other chapters instead of a couple. So that money has been set aside for the complete update of the master plan. And we recently received those proposals. They're under review right now, because there's price and non-price. So they're reviewing the non-price proposals currently. So you'll see master plan on another fiscal year. Fiscal '21 for portable radios, that project is complete. So, but within fiscal years, there's overages for other projects that can be transferred to cover deficits. So at this point, I would say those should remain. We're planning on putting the carport reconfiguration project back out to bid. If you recall, we put that out to bid during COVID. And due to the economy and inflation of a lot of factors for building supplies, the cost was extremely excessive at that point. But we're hoping to see better results now, or at least try to go back out to bid for that project. That appropriation was $135,000. The kitchen remodel at the senior center, that's a project that MoneyTech said they would be, could do the new cabinets for the senior center after they were done the Ritter. And I received a call today, the Ritter project is complete.
Excellent.
So, yep, I think if anyone gets an opportunity, they should put their head in to the break room. I think they did a great job. All the feedback I got about the students as well was good. They were very respectful of the employees and the space. So overall, I think it was a great project and use of their, their skills and
MoneyTech has been really helpful with these remodels, with helping with the cemetery. I mean, they've even helping us kind of plan out initially 30th School Street. So, I mean, they really are providing a good service back to the community, which is great for the kids who are going there.
Yes. All right. So we'll stop sharing this one, move on to the fiscal '22. It's Okay. So the, this is the fiscal '22 capital plan. The turnout gear, that project has been fully expended. It's complete. The police department, the bulletproof vests, there is $1,594.98 that can be closed out and for unexpendable capital towards fiscal '24 plan. The six-wheel dump truck that we spoke of earlier, that's further delayed now to expected to deliver January 24. There is a remaining amount of $1,164 from that purchase price. The public safety building chiller replacement, that project is complete. There's just still some remaining invoices to be processed. So I haven't highlighted that, that number. The Flat Hill Culvert construction project, there's $394,210. And that will be put out to bid in March. And the construction would be the fall of '23. And we also have a grant for $500,000 that's going towards that project as well. The police vehicle marked replacement, that vehicle's purchased, and that project can be closed out as well, $2,259.72. The Turkey Hill Elementary School exterior envelope repairs, that project is complete and fully expended. The Ritter ADA ramp construction, that we need a new architect to revise the bid package and resubmit to the APDC. So our new facilities director, who started last week, is currently reaching out to Perkadux. The town hall repairs, that was advertised, and those bids are due February 23. That's for $59,975. And the Page Street survey design, that has been complete. The Ritter envelope repair projects also is related to the ADA ramp construction. So we need an architect that's all one, the same big bid package.
I want to ask a question on that. So the APDC denied our request. Why do we need a new architect?
So the bid specifications did not include every single window in that building. It was windows that were identified in the VERTEX report for replacement. The police vehicle marked replacement, the second one, that vehicle's received, that project's complete, and the amount can be closed out, $2,259.72. The public safety building carpet replacement, we need specifications drawn up for that project. So that would be a project the facilities director would need to work on as well. The Marshall Park master plan, there are $13,377 left in that capital line. The conceptual design is complete. They're currently exploring schematic design to move that further along in the process to supplement, you know, and get them further to a point, because they received funding for engineering at the town meeting, as you're aware. And the three-quarter ton pickup with plow was received this month and is now on the road. That's for DPW.
All right.
Any questions on any of those?
Nope.
So the Page Street Culvert construction project, that's anticipated to be put out to bid in the spring, with construction starting this summer. The 10-wheeled truck, like we said, I noted earlier, that has been now delayed to March of 2024. But the, we've fully expended that, for that cost of that vehicle, truck. The public safety building engineering design for drainage, that's currently on hold. The new facilities director will need to assess whether that's a need or not, and whether we can reappropriate those funds to the fiscal 24 capital plan. The senior center HVAC upgrades, that will be a project the new facilities director will need to assess as well. The master plan, like I noted, proposals were received on January 19. And the non-price ones are price proposals are currently being reviewed. The two-way radio system for the DPW that was ordered, and the estimated delivery date is April of 2023. The canine replacement, now that Officer Jack Wagner is the canine handler, they'll be looking at procuring the canine. The police marked Ford interceptor hybrid vehicle was ordered in September, and the delivery date is unknown at this time. Last year, it took longer than normal, but within the year. The town hall repairs, we will be asking an architect for a proposal for services for, for, that's a separate town hall project. The Flat Hill Road drainage study, McCarty Engineering submitted their recommendation report, which the board is in receipt of. And we've also received the response from the village trustees on that report as well. So that will be a future agenda topic, I assume, that the board will want to meet with everyone and that the board will want to meet um with everyone involved to for next steps. The one-ton dump truck with plow for the schools, that was ordered, the estimated delivery um last I heard was January. And so that should be shortly if they did not receive it already. The records retention project, I'm working on a RFP for that project, with the first phase being destruction of um records that we do not need to hold any longer. And then the next phase would be uh long-term um electronic storage. The utility tractor for the rotary mower combo was ordered in September as well. The estimated delivery date is June of two thousand twenty-three. The Marshall Park Survey, that project uh will be complete by this week. By Deliss and Roy, checked in with them this week. The senior center roof replacement, that will need specifications drawn up, um and that will be handled as well by the facilities director. The one-ton dump dump truck with plow was ordered, and that estimated delivery date is March of two thousand twenty-three. The school's mower was ordered as well, fully expended that line. The Brooks House Foundation, the new facilities director will need to assess that project, the foundation repair. The police marked one-fifty responder was ordered in September. Um at that time, sixteen to twenty weeks was the delivery date. It's probably the same as um I think for the police cruiser, so that should be changed with an unknown date. But that's what they were told at that time. The old primary school, the hazardous materials abatement, that project is currently out to bid with bids due February sixteenth. The senior center installation of a generator, that needs specifications that will need to be also addressed by the facilities director, working with an architect engineer for that project. The outdoor ADA patio, the documents are close to completion on that project, expected to be advertised in February. And the AC for the classrooms at the primary school is currently on hold. Um the school is reassessing the project after they received those revised estimates. That's that's a decision um that I think the school committee and the superintendent will need to make on um if it's going to be a smaller downsized portion of the project.
All right. Well, thank you, Heather, for that update. Are there any questions or comments from the board to the town manager? No. Okay, well, thank you, Heather, again. You know, I think I really appreciate these updates. I think it uh really kind of helps us understand the volume of requests that are coming. You know, one thing you noted, I know we had mentioned police a lot in this, these reports. Um but one thing that you noted earlier, I I was able to meet this morning with the chief of police for, you know, about forty minutes or so. And one thing that he highlighted to me was was the twenty-seven thousand contacts last year, uh requests for assistance and and service calls, twenty-seven thousand. Um it is, uh you know, within our dispatch, which is regional, um our town is the highest um by by a lot. Um and our contacts per officer, as far as how many people each officer is interacting with, is also the highest in this region. Um so I know that we've needed to invest more in our police um to help make sure with our growth over these last several years that we can meet those um those staffing expectations from the federal government and from the state. So thank you, Heather, for that detailed
You're welcome.
All right, so you get to take a breath, and then I'll start talking for a bit here. All right, next on our agenda tonight is discussion of ARPA. So here's where we are at. Um I know that we would, we had planned to have a discussion on this on the uh seventeenth. Uh that was um obviously interrupted um because of the pressing need to address residents' concerns as related to tax assessments. So, you know, the meeting on the tenth for us uh was was largely a public comment meeting. And then the meeting on the uh seventeenth for us, we did have the admin session uh to kind of pay the bills and everything else we do. Uh but then we also committed a substantial portion of time that evening to also address um assessment concerns. So where we're at with ARPA, um so I have a couple notes. And bottom line is we, I'd like for us to work through a couple of things. So what what the members um provided, and I think everyone provided it um like the weekend before we had that meeting on the tenth, which I think is trying to just change the tone for the month for us. Um so what was requested prior to that was for all members to come to the meeting or to provide me um with updates based on the draft that was given, um so that way I can come up with a composite-type document that incorporates all the feedback. Um there's a couple of things that we need to sort through first. So as reading through the feedback, I I I accept that we need to kind of make a couple of decisions. So I just want to provide a couple of things that were clear. Um that when it came to pandemic mitigation, which was noted in the draft, um there seemed to be majority agreement that that can be removed, that that seemed to be addressed by the CARES Act, and that it could be answered by the general admin um budget within the project. So there seemed to be agreement on that. In the general admin um budget, not general admin, the general fund, in the general admin budget, where we had um in the draft, we had allocated or suggested to allocate some money to the town manager and finance director, um there was unanimous agreement, including from the finance director and town manager, to remove that. Um and so we seem to be agreement there. There was also agreement um to take the water and sewer um and infrastructure allocation and combine that into the general fund as well. So we all seem to be in agreement on those areas, and that will be reflected in the update. So where we were split was on burials and cremations and uh staff bonus and support for nonprofits. So there was not an overwhelming consensus on those areas. Um I think the intimation regarding staff bonuses um was was, to summarize, you know, I think ARPA provides for us, I need to step back before I state this comment. ARPA provides for us this framework, um uh and it's really ARPA, CLF, CLC, or something along those lines. But it provides a framework, it's about a, they gave us an overview, it's about a sixty-three-page document, and most of that talks about where the money should be spent and where you can't spend the money. Uh most of these funds are being, you know, designated for different reasons. Um I think when it came to, uh when it came to one of the areas, staff bonuses, or also known as premium pay for uh critical employees, that what was identified uh in the in the funds was that it is an area where we can commit money to. Now, after doing a little bit more research on who would qualify, it would very much so be a split in staff. That we would not be able to say every staff is eligible, um that we would really have to kind of pinpoint critical roles. Um I think my initial idea was to support it. Um you know, I'm the probably the swing here, and so my um decision is not to support it. And the reason why, uh and and that becomes then the majority does not support staff bonus. And the reason for that is, you know, I think I initially, the language seemed to suggest that this is something that could be provided to teachers and admin staff, and really all of our employees. Um and it seems that uh it's really going to be a limited amount of people who could even be eligible. Um and that then becomes a, to me, I don't want to put ourselves in the position of pitting staff against each other. Um that when you have some staff who who clearly were here, working in the building, interacting with the public, you had teachers clearly interacting with a lot of students, you know, basically interacting with the public. Um you had, you know, firemen, police officers. I don't want to draw the line on who gets what, I'd rather not draw a line at all. Um and so that then becomes us not being split on on that. Um burials and cremations, um that's where we were kind of split. And so basically, the funding says that we can allocate money um for people who died of COVID-nineteen to help cover the burial costs or cremation costs. Um not funeral costs in general, but just burials and cremations from people who died from COVID-nineteen. I would like to have this, this is an area where I think we all need to come to some form of majority on, um because that's going to have an impact. Right now, we seem to be split. Kind of, uh depend, we're kind of split.
I have a question in regards to that.
Sure.
Would that be going forward? How long would we be paying that out? And how many people are on that list right now?
So as far as what we are aware of, um we are aware of, um what was it, two people? I think we're, we have confirmation of two people in Lunenburg who for sure died of COVID. But I think there's a suggestion that that number may be closer to fifteen. Um so what our exposure is there is somewhere between two and fifteen. Uh I think that if we provide it, I would like for it to be retroactive, to go back to when the pandemic began, and to carry through to the end of two thousand twenty-six, we need to expend COVID funds. Um most burials, you know, burial portion varies from five to seven thousand dollars generally per person, and the cremations are usually two to three. So my thought on this, and I'll plug it, is, you know, that I don't normally think the town should be paying for burials um and cremations. However, if the federal government specifically provides money for that purpose, as they have in this case, I think that we should. To cover the burials and cremations of anyone who died of COVID, we can also put additional requirements on that, that, you know, it has to be people who are um receiving other forms of financial assistance from the state, and which that was a hardship. We could say it just broadly to anybody, um but we are kind of split. Any strong opinions on burials and cremations?
I do. So I would, you 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 had, I was totally in line with you when you said you don't generally support municipalities covering burials and cremations, and I would stop right there. The fact that the federal government allows for it is irrelevant to me. Uh all deaths are tragic, and whether they're coming from COVID or somebody in your family gets into a car accident, you know, they are indeed a fact of life of burials and cremations. I don't understand why money would be appropriated to one and not the other, uh both being tragic deaths and and certainly people dying before their time. If you believe in dying before your time, I guess. Uh so to me, it makes no logical sense, because we wouldn't be doing it for other reasons and other purposes, and so therefore I do not support it.
Any other strong opinions?
I agree with Mr. Alonso.
All right, any, we have three people who agree with Mr. Alonso.
Oh, I agree with Mr. Alonso.
All right, we are decided, okay. Um support for, uh we all were in agreement to assign dollar amounts at the end. Um so a couple of things
No, I was not.
What are you talking about?
Assign dollar amounts.
In each category?
Sing it.
Talking about per category?
That, I think we were all in agreement that the dollar amounts are in there as draft dollar amounts, that they were just there. Um but that we weren't going to go with that.
Oh, okay, okay, we weren't going.
I was like, wait.
You said the opposite of what I wrote.
I was gonna say.
Okay. No, we were all in agreement on that.
Okay.
All right. Um so that was another thing. So support for nonprofits, so a couple of things have come up as requests. Uh support for nonprofits was also an area where we were split. Um so ARPA provides uh funding to support nonprofits. Um you know, how I can envision that money being played out is in that we can, number one, restrict it to being nonprofits that are based in Lunenburg, that are that in which, you know, they're they they're in this community, they're founded here, and they're for the benefit of the community. So that then only leaves a handful of organizations, right?
With what, for example?
So an example would be the food pantry. That clearly people have been impacted throughout this experience. I think speaking with the the different people who are working at the food pantry, they've seen a surge um in people going there. That if we can provide funding to support their efforts, I think that goes a very long way.
What's the other one?
Um the second one is the teen center. Um that I
Boys and Girls Club.
Boys and Girls Club. I think that the pandemic has brought about this need um for i- it's increased the need for there to be some form of services to assist. It's really thrown, I think, a lot of families out of whack, and to get a better understanding of how how we can support that, whether that's increase enrollment, whatever it is that we can do um to support them and get a better communication with them on that. That's another area where I, those are kind of two things that stand out to me. Third being the Lions Club, uh which provides a lot of benefit, Lunenburg Lions Club, which provides a lot of benefits in particular um to the senior community here in town. And I think that they're another organization um that has been strained throughout this um experience, and that may benefit from some public funds.
So that's the, that's the food pantry.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's two.
That's two.
Okay, so then we'll say two. So those are the things that stand out to me. Um and I think that it's worth leaving up here to explore how we can help better serve the uh the community. I'll stop there. What are you guys' thoughts?
I would offer that I share those two organizations, and while I am for leaving it in, I want to hear their proposals about how we, they should be reimbursed and for what. I don't want it to be open-ended, the government doesn't want it to be open-ended. So I'm willing to entertain requests for ARPA money, as long as they can prove or provide evidence that how things change for them and how they expended funding to expand or change their services during those periods.
Okay. Do we have anyone else in agreement?
I I'm in agreement with Mr. Alonso on this. I, the two organizations, uh the Lions Club slash Food Pantry and and uh Boys and Girls Club, I I think are both worthy of support, but I am interested in the impact. And frankly, before I entertain any anything, um I I'm hesitant to expend any of the ARPA money until the town's financial situation is a little more settled, uh based on the recent events over the last month. Because this discussion would have gone, I think, uh differently i- if it had happened on on January seventeenth or 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 tenth, i- if none of the other events had occurred in town.
Correct. Okay. Another um request was for public safety, to be able to respond to the homeless camp that appears to be in the woods behind Walmart and Hannaford. Um to look into some solutions there. So this came up in the feedback um from from members. It's, you know, I can support it, I don't know what would necessarily be needed, but I think that there's definitely a need to address the fact that um that we have a known homeless camp behind Hannaford and Walmart. So for now, are we in agreement on public safety, holding this as a placeholder?
First, I'm hearing it, so yeah, I mean, I'm more than willing to hear more information about it.
Okay. All right, I can work with that member and further develop it. Uh another request, environmental sustainability, uh improving the trash and recycling program. So I know that we already have funds allocated for this. I know one of the concerns that's come up from me and other residents um and uh is the open bin containers for recycling, that it is causing pollution. Uh when the wind blows and and it's it's, you know, empty containers are going over the place. That there may be some monies that can be utilized to resolve that. Um that that's one area, and then in general, like, is there anything else that we can do to to identify kind of long-term uh solutions for trash? And generally, environmental sustainability. Um I know that we had proposed previously, which we've put on hold, some environmental policies. I think that that is kind of uh while an important topic, we have, I have kind of reprioritized that a little lower in the list, to kind of uh resolve some of the other more pressing things. I would like to keep some language in here that addresses environmental sustainability. I know another member does as well. Are there are three of us in agreement on this?
I have to say I don't really see the tie-in with ARPA money with that category. I would think that dealing with environmental and trash and recycling would be something we would do regardless of any pandemic situation. So I don't know that using money for that, but also pandemic probably wasn't anticipated being used for ambulances, and I'm about to propose that, so. So I don't feel strongly against it or for it, I just don't really see the tie-in.
Um you brought up the the trash and recycling program, and and recently, um if you've may have seen articles out there that uh um one of the well-recognized environmental organizations has come out against plastic recycling. Um because the plastic recycling, in many cases, has been shown to be um creating more uh greenhouse gases due to the uh energy intensity it takes to recycle these materials than throwing them away. It was an article I saw, I didn't read more into it, but it's one of those things that I think uh may need to be reevaluated over the coming years, because plastic is such a huge part of society now. Um and whether it makes sense to just stick with with paper and glass, uh things that we know are, can be efficient efficiently recycled, and maybe rethink the whole policy uh altogether. Uh so because there's question marks in my mind uh about that program in the coming years, and I'd like more uh guidance and and recommendations. guidance and, and recommendations, uh, you know, from, from vendors and, and people who work in the industry, uh, before I commit to any uh, uh, plan in that regard.
Well, that would keep a lot of plastics off of the road, if we stopped recycling them.
Right.
I can, I can support Mr. Dwyer's position, yes. Would you mind forwarding that article?
Yeah.
That'd be really helpful. Mr. Franco, do you have an opinion on this?
I, I think that Mr. uh, Dwyer makes a lot of sense there, so I, I can cover what he said.
Okay. Um, all right, another area, uh, which was um, pretty pronounced, and I, I, uh, mental and physical health. Um, and specifically looking at the Marshall Park project, uh, identifying that it will have a, um, it has the potential of having a profound impact on the physical and mental health of members of our community, and committing to support that project in a substantial way. So there's also that request from a member to, on the front end of this, commit funds, um, notable funds, um, to support Marshall Park. All right, let's talk about that when we talk about the ambulance. So Mr. Alonso, you wanna?
The ambulance?
Well, sure, so, I mean, the, in the town manager's review of existing capital uh, plan items over the past few years, if you noted that when things get approved at town meeting in, in May, that by the time we get approval and everything from the, from the, and the budget in place, it's already Au- uh, August or September before items get o- ordered. Now, when we have items that are in so importantly critical, such as the plow trucks, which we are now two down because the two that we've already ordered have been pushed out, and now we are ordering uh, on her proposed plan of tonight, two more, and then you have the replacement rescue or the ambulance, the, the number one ambulance. If those are going to be long-term items, getting a head start of eight months to get them ordered seemed to make logistical sense. Clearly, from a pandemic point of view, getting a rescue truck makes, i- is easy to explain. And again, from a safety point of view, for the position we found ourselves in with the plows, it makes sense. And then that would off, that would prevent us from having to use the, the special uh, purpose stabilization fund and save that for may either another year or going down further down the list potentially. But just for the expedited nature of, of the vehicles, given the pipeline that we already see the backlog in, to me, it makes sense to appropriate those from this board and get those done. I don't think they're contentious items. I don't think anybody who would go to town meeting would vote against the ambulance or against the two plow trucks. So we're going to spend the money one way or another, and if we have ways to get a, the six to seven, eight-month head start, I think it's, makes sense to do.
Okay. So I'm just confirming the numbers, uh, with Heather. Uh, two hundred and forty thousand for each truck, five hundred and six for the ambulance.
Which is nine.
Yeah, so nine, yep, okay.
Can I just, I, I agree with the, the idea, the concept, the timing. Um, I just want to note, one of the reasons that the recommendation I have made tonight and to the finance committee last Thursday. For those six items was mostly funded by the special purpose stabilization. So if we remove that funding source and supplant it with ARPA funds. Um, it's not like the special purpose stabilization fund.
Can be used for other things.
Right.
And I don't want, I, again, I want to be clear, that is, I, that was just something that would be a, uh, uh, that would be a potential bonus. But that's not why I, I am suggesting doing this. I'm suggesting doing this to get an eight-month head start on the order. For something that we think we're going to order anyway, and that we had, we, we know for a fact or backlog in their delivery. So even if we didn't extend the capital plan, and we just did the rest of the, the three other projects to keep the financial conservative nature of what you presented tonight, I think it would still be worth doing.
I just don't want people to think then we'd have the nine hundred and eighty-six thousand to go towards projects that weren't part of tonight's recommendation. Cause they, they, um, looking, thinking of the list, I don't think any of them would.
Right, I think they would not, yes.
Would that preclude, uh, doing a transfer from that fund during town, at town meeting?
Town meeting can transfer those funds for whatever purpose, if, yeah, for, with a two-thirds vote.
Right.
So it doesn't preclude it, 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 it's not in line with what our original intent for use of those funds was for.
Uh, personally, I, I've advocated this before any of the tax stuff started, but with the ARPA funds, I'm, I'm fully in favor of using those to, to fund capital projects, cause the town can keep the other money for other purposes. And I, I think, uh, strangely enough, that seemed to be a, a pretty good stance in hindsight, because I, I think we're at, at, at a place where uh, that really could be useful to us, uh, and, and allow us to fund the things we want to fund now. And then, in a conservative manner, I, I, I have to say, I think the town manager did a great job of, of trying to keep the capital, uh, proposed capital projects to, to, uh, what is absolutely necessary this year. So use those ARPA funds to fund the entire capital plan as proposed, and if we then need to reallocate funds at, uh, town meeting in May, uh, based on a, as, uh, the abatements get sorted out and all those sorts of things, that, that, I'd be totally in favor of that.
Mr. Franco, Ms. Selectwoman Sroka, or I can also make my comments if you guys aren't ready.
You can make yours.
Mr. Franco, you ready? You want me to?
Yeah, I, um, there's obviously considerations in both directions on this, because we don't, we don't, it, the process of reallocating those funds is not guaranteed or predictable. However, on balance, I agree with the logic presented by Mr. Alonso and Mr. Dwyer, that, um, on balance, I, I support their thinking.
All right. So we can stop there with majority support. Uh, I know we're gonna have to give votes, so let's keep talking. Um, I'm kind of torn. Um, I think that I agree with the rationale that has been said. Um, I think that where I probably, where, where I'm disagreeing a little bit, and I still need to work this out, is, you know, I think that when I read through the manual that they, that the treasury provided, my read of ARPA is that this is not a government grab, it is a community support fund. And that the money should be utilized to support the community, not to just better the government. Um, it seems as though my read, going through those sixty-four pages, um, they spend two talking about the government, really. And they spend the rest of it talking about a whole lot of other stuff, um, that deals with community. So I want to be careful to not, um, expend funds that could be used in another way. With that said, it sounds as though the majority of the funds are already kind of on a path to be utilized for the benefit of, um, the government. Um, based on the requests that we've received, kind of based on our own, uh, draft and, and thought process here, that we all are kind of looking at this as, you know, how can we use these funds to improve the community, um, through the government, not through external sources? Again, we can use this money to, to pay for mental health counseling for people, we can use it to pay for burials for people, we can use it for nonprofits. There's a whole lot of other uses that are non-governmental. Um, we can use it to give premium pay for staff, we can use it for water and sewer infrastructure, we can use it for broadband infrastructure. And the one category in which we're able to use it for whatever we want to use it for is the lost revenue category, which we didn't actually lose any revenue during the pandemic. However, the legislation assumes that we lost ten million. And that was a presumption that was written into the law, that we lost ten million dollars, and so we can spend up to ten million dollars on governmental needs. In our case, we only received three point five million, so we can expend all of it on governmental needs. So I think in my head, I'm a little torn, um, but, I mean, I think the majority, you, you know, I think we all know that I like to support the majority of the board. That I like for us to get consensus decisions, and I don't like split votes. Um, so I will support my colleagues, but I also want to hear what Selectwoman Sroka has to say.
So basically, Mr. Dwyer said that he would support funding the entirety of the capital plan.
The six items proposed, correct.
With the ARPA funds, and that would leave us with how much in ARPA funds after that?
Yep, so we have, the capital is what, one point three?
One point three, six million.
All right, let me do the math. So three point five minus two point one or something?
Two point one.
I have to think about how much we've already, we've already spent a hundred and fifty, keep in mind.
Oh, so.
Two. And then we said one point three?
Yeah, one point three.
Two point oh five, so roughly two.
Two point oh five.
Good math. Two million.
Yep. When are we gonna decide what we're spending that two million dollars on?
We can, uh, that's gonna change the whole equation as we move forward, but we can make the commitment today if we wanted to. Tom, are you in support of that commitment to, about the whole capital plan?
I, I wouldn't be against it. I don't necessarily see the need to, because the stuff that we're waiting for would have to go out to bid and everything anyway for all the security things, so I don't see the need to. I don't, I don't, I don't feel strongly against it. Again, the only reason I chose those three items is because of the lead time and the other ones would just go the normal course. I would address one concern you had in your point about, you know, government needs versus community needs. I would say that there's nothing more community need oriented than an ambulance and two plow trucks that keep people safe in winter and everything, and sanded. So they're not for the sake of the government, they're for the sake of the larger community, who doesn't use the roads or rely on the roads, even if you don't drive. You rely on people driving safely, and the ambulance is pretty straightforward, so. I, I don't, I think you may be able to rest your hat on that at least, and say that it is a community-oriented approach. But as far as the, the request for the whole thing, I would support it, but I don't see the need for it, because we'd have that, that extra, whatever the town manager was purporting to come out, the what, the four hundred thousand dollars or so, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I mean, certainly can wait, but.
I'd just like to make one additional point. It would reduce the time at town meeting.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
Which we all care. Those meetings are, are tough.
My goodness.
Heather, uh, do you have any more thoughts on, uh, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand allocating off the top to ARPA, uh, from ARPA to support?
I just want to make sure that other things are funded with the ARPA funds.
Two million dollars left over, basically, I mean, where that, where that puts us, um, is, uh, I mean, we, we did receive like three and a half million dollars worth of requests, however, the parks commissioners were like a big chunk of that. So most of that was one plan, was one project, and I think excluding the parks, uh, I think we had, uh, we do have a list somewhere in here, but it was a little bit more manageable. We also haven't, you know, addressed, you know, facility needs that are gonna go away, but Heather, what are your, what's your recommendation to us?
Um, well, I would have to give it more thought and more conversation with the finance committee and capital planning committee. Cause I think they need to weigh in as well. And to, even if we were to fund the entire recommendation, um, as presented tonight, I think-
Just looking at the nine eighty-six.
Yeah, just the nine eighty-six or the one point three?
The nine eighty-six.
Yeah, that wouldn't change, at this point in time, wouldn't change my recommendation for the projects, cause that is the amount of funding, I think, at this point in time that I can recommend safely to the town.
If we talk about mechanics, and I, if I can just ask you this question, we talked about mechanics of this. Is there a way for us to, and, and I thought the answer to this question was no, but I just want to confirm it. Is there a way for us to alloc, commit funds today, and then for town meeting to commit funds for the same purpose?
Yes.
And then that frees that money back up for us? Is that, or, I mean?
So you're asking if, if the board voted to commit ARPA funds for one purpose, and the same purpose was voted at town meeting for, through a town appropriation. Um, can you rescind your commitment of ARPA funds?
Correct.
Yes. There's, there's just a deadline as far as when those commitments have to be made for ARPA funds. So that can change up into that.
Okay.
Point.
So would we want to, if we approve this nine eighty-six, would we want to do it in a way that decreases it from the total balance? Or do we want to do it in a way that basically provides those funds back? And if that makes sense? Does it matter? It's all the town's money.
That's the way I'm looking at it, right. That's the way I'm looking at it. I mean, one of the things that we don't, we, we've said, and even though it's far off, deadlines that are far off all of a sudden quickly approach, so the fact that there's a deadline on the ARPA funds, you're basically playing with, you know, you're just, ma- matter of where you're paying, which pile, which pool of money you're, you're funding things with in this case. So I'd rather not cut it down to the wire, not that we're getting close, but I mean, just to keep that at least as a, a thought in our head, that you don't want to cut it close and just have to like, oh, we gotta do this. I'm not against your strategy here, but I don't know that it gains you anything, and if you say, we'll commit it with ARPA funds, and then I don't know what the process is to make the order, how much we have to put as a down payment, because obviously to hold the order for a truck or an ambulance, you gotta put some money down. But if you fill out the rest and you approve it at town meeting, and you rescind the balance, and you just use the rest, eventually you're just pushing chips around, right?
I want to tie this conversation to Marshall Park, so I'll ask you another question, Heather. Uh, cause this has come up, and I don't, I don't recall the full answer. Um, so one of the questions that's come up from, um, the parks commissioners are, can we allocate money, let's say it's a million dollars, into a fund that they can then use to apply for grants from? Um, and that as they get that grant money, matching grants, et cetera, that they could potentially pay that fund back, um, and keep it rolling, or some kind of thought process like that? Uh, I know that you got the communication as well as I did. What are your thoughts on that, the process?
So, um, I plan to have a meeting with the finance director and the park commission chair regarding that question, because there's a difference of opinion. Um, the finance director and I align in our opinions that, um, typically in reimbursement, um, type grants and stuff, they go back into the, the general fund. Um, so if per se, um, ARPA was a designated source of funds to use as matching amounts for grants. Um, the question was, could, once that, um, reimbursement came back to the town, could it be, get redeposited into, um, the ARPA funds? But there's a crossover, you're, you're looking at state grants versus, these are federal funds that we are required to have a whole federal audit on these funds, that it's not a typical accounting practice as to deposit, they would have to be, ARPA funds would have to stay with ARPA monies, and interest earned from those monies, so.
Mr. Chair, to, to, to those points, if I may, through you to the town manager, I mean, if anybody's proposing that we will use ARPA funds, and then if we got grant money, we put it back in an ARPA fund, I would be against that, again, because of the deadline.
She just flew in.
I would be against that because of the deadline associated with ARPA funds. I mean, so while we can earmark things and they go to the general fund, we could make a general, a general acknowledgement of the, to the town, to the town at large, that we, our intention would be to reallocate those to another fund and redirect them, even though they can't be directly earmarked, but putting them back in a fund that has an expiration date doesn't seem like a great idea. If you get money back, you want to put it in a fund that doesn't have an expiration date.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's a, a question to, for discussion for, yeah, for, for plan on.
Mr. Chair, I guess I'm a little puzzled. I guess the only benefit uh, of redesignating something as ARPA funds is that we can use that at our discretion.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know that, I, I favor that, because I tend to favor the, the, uh, town meeting, uh, funding things at, at the citizens' discretion rather than ours.
That's a great point, and I will.
Yeah, right.
Totally agree with that point. Okay, so. Okay, so I think, um, Heather, did you, did you have a proposal related to Marshall Park?
I would like to, I would like to put funds aside for Marshall Park, a substantial amount of funds, because I do believe that everyone would benefit from Marshall Park. I think that, um, we have a lot of, uh, things at, um, the school facility that during the day and in the evenings that you cannot use because it's being used by the school department. And it would be nice to have, um, that stuff open to the public over at Marshall Park. Similar, similar things, like pickleball court, basketball courts, a track, um, things like that. And, you know, myself in that age group, that's not a senior anymore, but if, whatever it is, adult, might want to use that. Because they don't have any kids over at the school anymore and they don't want to go to the school anymore. So they might want to have a park that they can use during the day to walk.
One of the things that also came up, and this is before we a- addressed those two things specifically. So one of the things that came up, and this was partly, I think, how I thought of the process and another member had, had jumped on the idea as well, was that, you know, we might want to take this first bite and say, here are the projects that we want to commit money to, and then create a process for everything else. You know, that we, you know, we might want to kind of broadly look at some of these requests that have come in, but, or we might just want to take them out of the fund. And then after we do that, that, then we can go back out to the community and say, here's what is remaining. And, you know, and then request and, and provide the guidelines and then ask for a request there and then continue to kind of refine as we go through this. It seems as though I think one of, the benefit of having ARPA money is, I will say this, that if we did not have ARPA funding and we were faced with this tax situation that we're faced with now, it would take us, what, six weeks to call a special town meeting? That it would take us six weeks to get money allocated from the current budget to even be able to start to address the concerns. That we have been very fortunate that, you know, in the federal government's overzealous interest of giving out probably way too much money to people, that we got some money and at our disposal to be able to use. And I think it highlights that in the future, that we may want to start planning on setting aside a fund just for these types of situations. Not that we expect something like this to happen again, cause we don't. But if there's something that comes up, right, that we can't expend money. And that we, that may be a fail-safe for us long-term, that we may want to get in the habit of, of allocating some money every year that then goes into free cash when it's not expended. But my concern again is if we didn't have this money here, we would be waiting another month for a special, for a special town meeting, to then get the money, to then try to bring on people. And, and at that point, you know, RFP is a six-week process, you know, six weeks, six weeks, that's 12 weeks, they only got 90 days to process these things. And we would literally be in awful situation. So all this kind of just highlights to me that as we go forward in our budgeting, realistically, we need to set aside some money.
Just going to point out, even if we set aside and bind, even if we do that, we still have to have a special town meeting to allocate it.
Correct.
The reserve fund, we don't need.
Reserve fund, we don't?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's 75,000 annually in the reserve fund.
So we could increase that amount.
In recent, um, years, that money has fallen back to free cash because we haven't had to utilize it.
But that's under the control of the finance committee.
Correct.
So anyway, that's just a little comment for something for us to think about. I am okay with us as a process saying, hey, here are the things that we know we're going to support, let's separate them, let's pull them out, and let's finalize this process for everything else. I'm willing to do that for Marshall Park and for the ambulance. Uh, I know that the request for Marshall Park is for 1 million at a minimum, and I would support that, and I know the request tonight is 986,000. Before we take, make any motions, what are our thoughts on both of these topics?
We could all, can we add the, the nonprofits in there too, without a number? Those are the top things that we're talking about.
I think we would have to finalize the plan for the nonprofits.
Okay.
We need a number.
Oh, we need a number, okay.
So, so just to clarify, this has to be expended by the end of fiscal year '25? Twenty, uh, six. Twenty-six. Committed by the end of, uh, '24. December 24. So we're, at the beginning of '23, we've just got these funds and reasonably speaking, if we just fund the ambulance and, and the two snowplows, that's roughly a third of the funds. I would be, uh, more inclined to say, you know what, I, I think we've done enough damage right now, why don't we just table this? Fund these things because we think they're worthy right now and table this until a little, little later in the year when we have a little more clarity in terms of our, our, uh, financial commitments in the future.
And Mr. Dwyer said exactly what I was going to say. I have every intention of funding, uh, a large portion, uh, to Marshall Park. But I want to know more about what the plan is and what's going to happen and just want to be further down the road. And they're not, they're not hurting, they don't need the money right now. So, you know, I'd say exactly what, I support his position 100%.
All right, I think we are two to two here. Mr. Franco.
Yeah, I want to sign on to that as well. I, um, I, I, it's very important to me as well to put, to make sure that we have a placeholder for the Marshall Park, uh, situation, but the urgency isn't there. I'm really being pushed over the, uh, line of support, you know, into the camp of support here, uh, based on Mr., uh, with the, with the, uh, with the, um, ambulance and the, uh, plow trucks, based on the logic of the lead times and, and all of that. And just more generally, I, my jury's a little bit out on like this idea of supporting the entire capital plan through ARPA funds. But those three things, yes. So.
All right, I'm going to try to persuade one of you to change your votes here or thoughts here, and this is what I would have said. Number one is that, yeah, I know you're here, but, number one is that the current capital plan doesn't allocate any money for Marshall Park. And so I think that there is a sense of urgency, that this is something that is needed in our community, you know, there's a need for field space in the schools. And that committing money now gets that process going as well. Certainly don't, I'm not opposed to rolling it in as we had planned into the full process, but I do think that making the commitment, um, today, if, if we're willing to do it tomorrow, what, what difference does it make today unless we're, unless we need to get a better sense of dollar value? So I.
That would be my, that would be my counterpoint, was until we knew of dollar value. So there's nothing, there's nothing critical that, that gets in the way. And remember, as Mr. Dwyer pointed out, ARPA money doesn't require a town meeting, it just requires this board. So at any point, at any point that any one of our meetings, we could vote it in. So there's no, we're not going to, you know, if, if the urgency came and it was like, this is the money. The question I have is, how much money should we allocate? I mean, it's just like a guess and a win. I don't know. Should it be 900,000? Should be a million one? Should be a million? I mean, I don't have any arguments for or against any of those numbers at all. They're just random numbers to me. And how, and by the way, the part that we don't fund, how do we fund the rest of it? Are we going to put a capital, you know, a two and a half capital project override question out? Are we going to fund it in other ways that we don't know? I mean, that's why I want to see the fuller picture about how the whole thing is going to be done. I am completely, I've said it very many times, completely in support of the project. So I don't want that to be in doubt. It's just a matter of, I don't see the need to commit money tonight for that project from the ARPA money.
Okay. So February, February the 21st would be our next realistic opportunity to give the parks commissioners times to finalize their numbers and et cetera, and to come back and have that kind of discussion, so. Is there a motion to support, is there a motion regarding the 986,000? And the motion needs to note, by the way, commit.
I thought Heather wanted to go back to finance.
That's what I was going to ask the board, if they could wait on that and get, uh, speak with finance, or I can speak with finance and capital planning as far as the consensus.
So, I mean, I will say that ARPA is not at the, uh, uh, is at the full discretion of the select board. And so the request from the town manager is to delay another week to get for the, uh, how much time actually?
As soon as they would be able to meet, so the finance committee is meeting on the 16th. That's, and capital planning doesn't have a meeting scheduled at this point in time.
16th of February.
Yeah.
So if, if we wait till the 16th, the next meeting for us would be the 21st. Which now basically is March, and so the difference between March and July is four months. Cause July 1st is when the funds would otherwise become available, right?
July 1st, yep.
So that would be a four-month head start versus, yeah, sooner than that.
Four and a half.
I would like to, I'd like to vote on this one at our next meeting. Uh, hopefully the finance committee can respond quickly to the request. So, um, are we in agreement with discussing this, uh, next week?
I won't be here next week, but you know my position, so.
I'm in, in agreement with discussing it next week or at the 21st.
Yeah.
So 21st is okay with everyone?
Losing, losing one month, uh, in terms of, you know, authorizing this and then, you know, okay, so we lose a month. But I think for, for, uh, being prudent towards the, the, uh, town money, I, I think we take our time with it.
I'm, I'm willing to, to defer to the, to the town manager and, and the request, but not beyond the 21st. So if they don't have an answer, then I think we should vote on the 21st.
Okay. We will schedule, if we can follow up with two things. Parks commissioners, ask them to give us a revised number of what they need to get going. Also kind of just a general outline of how they think the whole thing's going to be funded. So that's one request of Parks Commissioners. And second request, um, is we will defer to your request, Heather.
Thank you.
And we will schedule this for the 21st.
And as chair of the capital planning committee, I will try to hold the meeting of the capital planning committee as you requested as well, so we can discuss it there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind indicating to the finance committee that the select board has unanimously indicated support of voting in the 986,000 dollars. All right, so that then gets us in a good spot. We can then, you know, allocate certain money for, um, things, you know, we'll separate out Marshall Park from the rest of the allocations and we'll look for a dollar there and then we'll finalize the process regarding everything else. Are there any questions, Ms. Lockwood, on what we're looking for?
I will have a public comment in a minute.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we will, uh, before we get too far, I want to talk about our, our meeting schedule real quick, because this actually brings something up. So we are scheduled to meet on the 14th of February, which I know is Valentine's Day. I know that some of you may have plans. I know that many people at home may have plans. What I propose is for us to flop, is to skip the 14th and to meet on the 28th instead. What are your thoughts on that? 21st is also a school vacation week.
What?
Makes no difference to me.
Makes no difference.
Not at all.
I will not be able to attend the 28th.
Okay. Mr. Franco, you don't have to raise your hand, you can just talk.
Yeah, I, uh, actually was going to kind of ask for a schedule shift, something like this, because I'm anticipating landing a, uh, senior tax relief, uh, framework for the board and that extra runway to do that would be, would be good. So on the other hand, Mr. Alonso is not going to be here on the 28th, but I don't think we'd need to be taking a final vote on anything on the 28th. But I just want to get something before this board and I think the 28th would be a useful day to meet, uh, or to at least have that option available.
All right. Sounds like we are, I think, we're, this is a, all right, I'll, I think we are going to meet on the 28th, not meet on the 14th. And if, um, Mr. Alonso, are you able to attend remotely on the 28th?
I will see what.
All right, we will, we'll plan a lighter agenda.
Okay.
I don't like to have heavy things when you're, when any member's not around.
I also appreciate one, not wanting to, you know, have it on Valentine's Day. Although nothing says love like a select board meeting. Want to know that.
Think a lot of people are going to disagree with that. All right.
TAlonso@LunenburgMA.com.
Okay, all right, going back to current business. So next is, um, so one of the things that's come up, um, from, uh, some residents at Hickory, at Hickory Hills have sent us a communication regarding a, a property at 15, I think it's 15 Cliff View, which is identified as an Airbnb. All right, so Heather and I had the opportunity yesterday to meet with town council during, um, council's regular, um, regular hours and to talk about through this. So we previously sent the communication over to council about, you know, and the, and the building commissioner about enforcement of our zoning rules, which basically say it's a residential neighborhood, if it's a business, you know, it's obviously some kind of zoning conflict there. So it's, it's, however, as our lawyer identified to us, it's not as clear-cut as that. That while, while we can identify that clearly that usage is not consistent with the zoning laws, that in order to prove that requires a really dedicated neighbor. Because obviously the town does not have the resources to engage in surveillance of people's homes. But it's going to require dedicated neighbors who are able to kind of log and, and so bottom line of this is what's suggested is that we also may want to directly explicitly prohibit it. So I've asked town council to provide some language, um, on this. He's, he's already given it. But I wanted to check in with the board, because usually things like this would go through, um, would go through the planning board. And so what I would like to do is, is send this off to the planning board for them to vet and discuss and go through, uh, and, but I want to get our endorsement of it. So the idea, the idea basically is to identify that a short-term rental is a rental that is less than 31 days. And it's, that wording is consistent with other parts of law, of case law that have come out. And so identifying that short-term rentals are those rentals that are less than 31 days and to explicitly prohibit them in all residential zones. And what that then does is it's basically a modification to the use table and identifying a use as like an Airbnb type thing. And restricting that use from being in residential areas. If anyone wanted to operate an Airbnb, then, uh, they would need to go before the ZBA and get a variance. So that is the idea, but the effect is that it will prohibit these residential, uh, residents and residential neighborhoods from being used for non-residential purposes. So on that framework, what are your thoughts?
So my first thought is, what your first thought was, that this should be in front of the planning board and not in front of us. But since you brought it up as a topic, I think you run a real risk of property rights. And I think this would be potentially, depending on how it's worded and maybe we should, I think it's a long process to look at what other towns have done and can you do it? And then what are the challenges going to be? Because my neighbor, before they sold their house to the current owners, unbeknownst to us, was renting a room while she was living there as an Airbnb. So in the house while she lived there. Now, should that not be allowed? It's her property and I guess there are ways around that. You don't have to advertise it on Airbnb. If you want somebody to be able to stay in your house for X amount of days and they give you money for that, I don't know. Is that something, how about, they don't give you money. So if they just let you their house. I mean, there's a lot of ways that you can start getting around this, and I'm not sure you could write something that's going to be so airtight. So it's all going to be in how it's worded. I'm, I'm, I, I think we're running into a really odd area of trying to enforce this.
Any other thoughts? And I'm asking if we, if the board is endorsing the idea of us asking the planning board to work on this? Heather's like, nah.
I don't, it's so hard because people bought property probably with that intention. And there was nothing in the law that said that they couldn't.
Well, the zoning law says it's residential.
But they're not thinking of that as not residential. They're having people come and use it as a residential home, right? They're making money on it, yes, but people aren't using it in a different way than residing in it, are they?
I don't know if I reside in a hotel, but I certainly.
But you know, they're.
I've, I've, I've partaken of Airbnbs in the Finger Lakes, right on the water, and I'm like, okay.
So close to Airbnb, so I do not.
But you know, I'm just saying, is that a different use of the property though, per se, as what it was intended for? Yeah, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, I don't know.
I'm not heavily in favor of, uh, telling people what they can and can't do with their property.
Yeah.
Mr. Franco.
Yeah, this is a mixed bag and I, and I forget entirely your rationale. Mr. Jeffries, if you wouldn't mind reiterating for that, this, uh, you know, I'm hating on the Airbnb so much. But I do have a problem with the whole property rights thing. I mean, I, I'm, I believe in robust property rights and also, as for existing uses already, I mean, like, yeah, this may prevent. like, yeah, this may prevent these uses going forward, but as for any existing ones, wouldn't they sort of, I mean, what do you do, you shut them down? I mean, you know, they, wouldn't they sort of be grandfathered, in all fairness? Just all questions I have, I, I don't, I don't know where to go with this yet.
Well, I mean, I think that the majority of the Board does not support this, and that's pretty clear, so I think we can move on, um, but to, to, to just quickly answer your question, you know, my own opposition to Airbnbs are that it takes houses off the stock, that people are looking for homes to buy, and that what it does is it takes residential homes out of the housing supply, and it becomes an investment property for someone to make money, and so, you know, when, and so it's a whole different, I wouldn't say different class of people, that's not really true, but, but class in the sense of, you know, people who are in this, you're an investment-type, uh, person, and so if you think about like 10 homes, and how much an investor is willing to pay for a home that they're going to make money off of, versus how much a person who's going to live there is willing to pay, and what impact does that have on residential property values for all the neighbors, and, and if you, if we start having, and we're not having it yet, but if we start having more homes become Airbnbs in town, you know, then that's more businesses and residential neighborhoods, and people will be buying those homes at a higher cost, and why I think what we, um, that then has a negative impact on neighborhood values in terms of people who actually live there, uh, and so that's why I personally never stay in an Airbnb, I think that they're, that they're bad for neighborhoods, um, and I just personally don't want anything to do with them, so I, I have my, I'm, I'm in property, and that's my own personal opinion, um, and, and really, I think it's out of concern for all the people who want to buy a house, and who are competing with an investor, and to me, that's not reasonable, that's not right, and it certainly isn't fair, uh, when you're buying a home in a residential neighborhood, that you shouldn't be competing with investors, but investors are already in the market with rentals and everything else, with long-term, one-year leases, two-year leases, et cetera, so I mean, I don't know for sure if there's gonna be a, you know, I, I, I don't know enough about the Airbnb marketplace, it seems to be regular people who do that, some people go away, they rent their house out, that's understandable, but other people just buy homes for the sole purpose of renting them out, and that's what I think is dangerous to, to communities, but again, that's my opinion, I got off my soapbox now, uh, and I am, uh, I support the majority of the Board. Minutes, warrants, and actions. Let's start with the signature stuff.
Uh, we still need Lou when he's back.
Uh, Lou, when you are back in person, there's a couple of pages, this is regarding the police union contract, um, so I think, yeah, Mr. Alonso, if you wouldn't mind signing, that'd be good. Alright, we're going.
Alright, Mr. Jeffries, can you please repeat what you just said, like I'm having a problem hearing sometimes, could you say that into the mic again, when I'm back online, what?
Sure, when you're back, when you're able to come back into Town Hall, uh, we have a police union contract that we need you to sign, physically sign. Okay, so it'd be in the Town Manager's, um, and Select Board Office. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, warrants, we have a payroll warrant in the amount of $949,974.73.
We could've bought an ambulance and two trucks with this.
(laughing). We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $570,230.59. We have a payroll deduction warrant in the amount of $59,437.3. Okay.
The top cover was.
Alright, let's see, do we have any minutes that require approval? Not seeing any, any action items today. Going down the line, Selectwoman Soroka, any action items?
No, oh, yes, I do, I have an action item.
Okay.
I want to be taken off the School Committee rep. I have personal reasons for that.
Okay, let's, why don't you and I talk about that after the meeting?
Okay.
And then we will discuss that at a future meeting. Any other action items?
Other, is there any, I don't want to pick a scab off anything, but is there any word about, uh, contracts lined up, although it's not the season for the line painting? Have we got anybody to commit yet?
No.
Okay. Mr. Dwyer, did you have any action items?
No.
Alright, Mr. Franco, any action items?
I have none, thank you.
Alright, I got two, um, well, maybe only one, so I was (laughing), so I was contacted by this, kind of a funny, not really funny story, but it's like a, you know, uh, whatever the word is, um, so a resident reached out, um, and they, she actually reached out to Representative, one of our representatives, I'm not sure which one, um, and they forwarded it to me, I think it was Representative Kuschmeri, and he forwarded it to me, so a resident reaches out, concerned about the location, as you go down the hill going towards Hannaford and Walmart, as you approach that intersection, the right lane has a right-turn-only sign that is kind of like halfway up, halfway between the intersection and that auto dealership thing, um, so pretty much, it's pretty, it's pretty far away from the intersection, and what it says is right turn, right lane, right turn only, now, we all know that when you're at that intersection, that plenty of people in that right lane just go straight, so.
Kind of like heading west on 2A.
Correct.
Okay.
Heading west on 2A, yep, from the.
Yes.
From Chase Road.
At the intersection, there's four lanes, there's the right ta, turn-only lane, there's two center lanes, and then there's a left-turn-only lane.
Yes.
No, there, no, there's three lanes, it's the right-turn-only lane, the straight lane, and the left-turn-only lane.
Yes, three.
Okay, and the right-turn-only lane is when you're talking about where if you want to go to Hannaford, and there's a person in front of you that doesn't want to go to Hannaford, you're sitting behind them waiting at the red light, the entire time.
Yes, so what the resident identified was that what happens is that exactly that, that she comes at that light, and that, and that there's a crazy merge, that people in the right lane speed up and cut over.
Oh, yeah, if you're in the middle lane, yes.
And so there was two requests from the resident, so request number one was if we can move that sign from where it's at and bring it closer to the intersection, that in her opinion, it's too far away.
I didn't even notice it.
And then the second request was that we can put an arrow on that, on that lane.
Oh, the turn-only.
That says right turn only.
Yes.
Now, I will say, I, I drove, so I drove down after getting this email, and I'm like, I don't remember there even being a sign.
I don't, I don't remember it either.
And I, and I saw the sign, it's kind of leaning a little bit, but it's way away from the intersection, and, and let me tell you what happened, so it was a red light, and I'm going in the right lane, only one there, and as I'm approaching, I'm probably coming at, I don't know, 20 miles an hour, and a woman, uh, a car in front of her, I could tell it was a female, she came out and cut me off, I had a slam, I almost hit her, and so while I went to look into this issue, I almost got in a car accident, and I mean, I, I was really close to hitting, to hitting that vehicle.
So she could go straight, right?
So she can go straight.
And cut the other person off.
And cut the other person off.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, and I was just like, this is insane, and, and while I was looking, researching it, it almost happened to me, and I was like, this is crazy, um, so I, because it's a state road, we have to go through.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
The state on this one, but obviously they're gonna ask us for our endorsement if we agree with it.
That, no, we have asked for them to put an arrow, they have, in the past, multiple times refused, now, why do you refuse to paint an arrow when you're okay, because they're the ones who placed the sign, and for us to move the sign, it has to be with their okay as well, why would you put a right-hand-only-turn sign that's way away from the intersection, but you refuse to paint the arrow on the street is beyond me, now, the logic evades me, and when logic evades me, all of a sudden I get like sparks and short circuits in my head, because I'm like, none of this makes any sense, and we've, we've requested that several times, it may, it only makes sense that that should be a right-turn-only, and it should be painted, and it should be, the sign should be when you're near the intersection, and I agree with all that.
Okay.
If we want to try again, I'd be more than happy to try again, but we have tried multiple times in the past.
Okay, I, I'm sure Lou, I'm looking at your face, you look like you're in agreement.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I mean, it, it, it makes complete sense, there's nothing that doesn't make any sense about it, I mean, you know, so, uh, yes.
Okay, so I, I will, I'll make the motion on this one, so I think the motion needs to be, um, I move for the Select Board to petition, uh, Mass Department of Transportation to modify signage at the intersection of Electric Avenue and Mass Ave, such that the right lane, right-turn-only sign is moved closer to the intersection, and that the right lane on the right westbound lane at the intersection has a right-turn-only arrow.
Second.
I don't, I don't, just.
I had to sit up for a lane turn.
Just open meeting law, I don't know that you could take a vote on something that we didn't.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Just as an action.
That was an action.
We can, we can ask the, the Town Manager certainly to request that that be put in from the Police Chief, which is what that, how that would go in.
Okay.
So.
So I withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Good point, um, and so Heather will, we are, oh, do we all have unanimous consent on this?
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know that I ever noticed the right turn.
(laughing) Not sign, I've never even noticed.
Before we get unanimous, good friend from Mr. Dwyer, I wanted to take an eye exam.
Are you one of those people?
Yes.
Those people drive me nuts, because not only.
Only for a little while, then we pass you.
Yes, but you know what, you make us want to gun it, okay, you are the people who make people want to go really fast in the middle lane, that are gonna cause an accident.
You are the people who make others' lives miserable.
Yes.
Alright.
No, not that, but.
So we seem to have unanimous.
And then you gotta slow down anyway, because yours is usually a policeman.
If I know there's a right-turn-only lane, I wouldn't use it.
In the carpet one parking lot.
I had no idea till I went to look into this.
Looking for people racing down the hill anyway.
Yeah.
Right?
Or at least I didn't.
Carpet one always has a policeman sitting there.
Plenty of room there.
Yeah.
Alright, so those, well, that was the action item, I had any committee reports this evening?
No.
Fincom had met, and the Town Manager presented the capital plan.
Okay.
And as I just said tonight, I will call a, a, a meeting of the Capital Planning Committee to, now that the Town Manager has made a presentation, and then the Board has made a, a proposition about ARPA, and we'll get them to weigh in on it.
Alright, alright, so hey, we're doing pretty decent here.
(laughing).
That's a ringing endorsement, we're doing pretty decent.
It's 9:40.
We're doing kinda okay. No, 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 I think I was way off in my time estimate for tonight, uh, I think we were, we were way, we were way off, alright.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to mention, uh, we had a Stormwater Task Force meeting in, uh, January, uh, it's the, uh, first time, um, one of the things the Task Force has discussed is trying to get an understanding of, uh, how the DPW allocates personnel resources, uh, uh, to stormwater, and it's the, the first time we actually got to take a look at, uh, the hours that, uh, the DPW Director's been tracking over the last few months, and uh, so it's, it, that was interesting for us, and, and each of the, the Task Force members had questions for the DPW Director, and some, some, uh, suggestions on, on some additional, uh, just simple data that we can collect to try and get an handle on what sort of resources we're devoting, so if in the future we develop a, a stormwater utility, we'll understand better how much we have to fund that utility, at least the, the personnel piece within town, um, and we'll have another meeting next month where we'll get more information from the DPW Director, as well as, uh, discuss, uh, CEI's, uh, upcoming work on the Stormwater Assessment Grant that the Town Manager had mentioned earlier, and that's on, our next meeting will be on February 16th.
Okay, uh, any other committee reports this evening? Alright, public comments, hold on, (laugh) Town Managers first, any public comments from the Town Manager?
No public comment, no, now you can raise.
Alright, any public comment from the public, Anna, good to see you.
Good evening, um, so, alright, just because I'm here, so I'm gonna give an opinion about a few different things before I get to my topic, first of all, that light, although it must be a sign that's right turn on, the other side has two lanes.
Yes.
So that is an assumption that I, I can go straight on, so at some point, someone created that intersection and changed their minds, put a sign in the wrong place, and I do sometimes go to the right lane, so the fact that that is something.
I see you there.
The fact that it's two lanes on the other side, it makes it, because it actually makes that intersection go faster.
Yeah.
So there is a reason for that, as to the Airbnb, since we are here, you know, uh, Mr. Chair, I do, I do hear your points about the Airbnb, but also that is the other side that I know, that I, I actually know people who lives in Providence, and I have other friends that rent a room in their house to like traveling nurses, that they come and stay, and it's actually a way to support people in staying in their homes, so if you think of people that, some of our seniors, empty nesters that have big houses in town, that have big tax bills that don't live in the lake, but we still have a big tax bill, you know, the ability to rent out a room is in a way to actually support us on staying in our houses, so that is, is a little bit of a double-edged sword, so I'm just saying that for your own, you know, thinking on, you know, it's not all bad, there, there are some positives on that, um, so regarding to the topic that brought me here from home, um, so Mr. Dwyer, that, I do see a danger on your proposal on just funding capital plan with ARPA funds and just keep the money back, the money that we have for, that we would otherwise use for capital plan for future use, and the biggest danger that I see is inflation, like, we're dealing with remarkable inflation at this point, and just leaving the money in the bank is a missed opportunity, so I think that's, that's a big thing that we gotta think about, we have, you know, an opportunity to do something big and use these, these funds with purpose, and that's why you guys are spending so much time discussing this, and I urge you to, you know, not just play safe, like, you know, our Town Manager likes to play safe, and I appreciate that, her being our CFO, um, but that is a, a missed opportunity there, which right now with inflation, we are missing a lot of opportunity, just getting a lot of things done that are meaningful, um, the other thing I'll say is that, you know, we did get on our special, in a special town meeting in the fall, the town voted at, I think they, it was a rate of 87% supporting Marshall Park, the engineering funds, it was a very special article, and I felt like it was a very strong support, um, and we are, there are missed opportunities for us to not having the funds that we can dedicate to construction right now, and one of those missed opportunities is exactly what we talked about at town meeting, which was, you know, there are grants out there that we can apply for, if we can reuse that money, I mean, all I'm think, trying to think of is ways to stretch that money to get the most out of it, but as of today, today there was a deadline of up to a million-dollar grant that, because we did not, we couldn't make the case by having the funds, that million-dollar matching fund in the bank that we said we could use this, because it was a reimbursement grant, we couldn't apply for it, now there will be another one that's due in the end of June, that if we don't have the money in the bank, that we can say it is a matching grant, that it is a reimbursement, if we don't have that money, we cannot apply and to make the case to win that grant, so there is a lot of missed opportunity not having this available fund for the Marshall Park project, now, you know, am I trying to think of ways to stretch the money? Yes, I will be guilty of that, but that's all with the intention of just getting the most for the money, getting the most that we can use, and just, you know, tapping into any resource to the town as little as we possibly can, so we're just, you know, we spend a lot of time trying to think of ways of doing that, um, my last request is, I do appreciate you all saying, yes, we're not gonna do this Marshall Park now, to support Marshall Park now, maybe then our next meeting, I think you said it's, uh, February 21st, but my question is, what is that exactly you're looking for, so that I can come ready for it, uh, we do have a cost estimate, uh, we have already phased, uh, the, the cost estimate has phases, so what is that I have to come to you with, um, and our other fellow commissioners, to present to you on your next meeting?
I can answer that.
Okay.
What is your plan for funding? So as far as where's the money gonna come from? So is, that's, so I think what we'd like to hear your ideas on, is how is it, it's, right now it's a what, five-million-dollar project?
So right now, the, the estimate that we got was 5.185 million dollars, and, and it is phased out in two phases, we asked for the project to be phased, so there is phases that goes from a hundred thousand dollars, that would be the little pocket, uh, by the pond, so there is different phases with different cost estimates, so depends on the, how much money we have, that's how much we can fund.
What I would encourage is assume, and I'm not, again, we haven't decided on a dollar amount, so assume the Select Board's gonna give you a million dollars for the Marshall Park, I know you did, assume the Select Board's gonna ask, give you a million dollars for Marshall Park, and if you can identify for us with that million, what it would be used for, but if you can also look at the full, full five million dollars and give us some information of how this can be funded, so you've mentioned matching grants, I know you can apply for them, but what's your maximum, uh, ability with those grants? So can the grants cover up to a million dollars, up to 1.5, that there's, could be potential there, and then what your, how you see the rest of this money coming together from multiple years of capital plans, if you're looking for some override, like how do you, how do you get this product to completion, what's the funding plan for it?
So that's really good questions, we have worked with Town Manager on some of that, and that has been a question that I asked her, you know, because I, I don't make money plans, she does, but, uh, you know, the, and that's where the idea of, of, you know, being able to reuse the ARPA funds to, if we can get into, the way we see things, and to make sure it's compliant with law, uh, there are, that we have investigated, there are up to two million dollars in matching grants that we can get, so if we get, that means we have, if we have a million that we can keep re. So if we get, that means we have, if we have a million that we can keep reusing, you know, you can get that two millions with that one million, possibly. I mean, what you're asking, that's a really big question, and that's why we decided to phase the project. And I think that's what we got to be aware of it, because with a million dollars, we can get a lot done. And, and we may not have that plan of the other four millions, but no, that plan is not gonna get done without the vote and the support of the town, of town meeting. So if we can get, move the project forward, that's what we are looking for. It's like playing soccer, you just play, you know, move your ball down the field, and you just go for it. So that's what we are looking for, we are looking for to apply for grants. And if we apply for grants and we don't have the matching funds, we're gonna have to come to town meeting. Now, if that, those funds are available for us, we can be more proactive in applying for those grants.
At the end of the day, though, ARPA money has to be used for a project. And so you have to identify what, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with the logic, but I think the request, to clarify and answer your question, it would be really helpful if on the twenty-first, you can kind of give us what a million dollars is gonna do for you, in concrete terms, what is that going to actually purchase? And I understand what you're saying, which is that there's matching grants, right? So you could act, you know, you can, I think in theory, use a million dollars to apply for matching grants, to then make it two million dollars. But within that two million or one million, you're still gonna pay for those things that cost one million dollars. So what are those, what's that one million dollars in cost? That's what I'm, that's what I would like to have an understanding for, what do, what does a town get for a million bucks? And I understand what you're saying about matching grants, but what physically will be.
I, I hear you, I have a question for you.
Yep.
My question is, I can come to you with the estimates that we have, and it's broken up by phases, with, you know, nice little graphics, and say, this is what a million dollar will buy us. But my question for you is, at that point, do you want us to say, this is what we're gonna do? Or can we then use this money to apply for the grants and trying to get some of the costs down, so we can use?
I think that's a conversation we can have on the twenty-first, but I, what I would expect is that if, if the select board says we're gonna allocate a million dollars, it's gonna go for these five different things, and that you actually use the money to do ten different things, that's great. So long as you at least do those five.
Right, okay, that's good, okay. So I'll probably be mending with Heather, because her and I worked on the estimate with, from Greg, and we'll review on that, so, okay. All right, so, thank you very much.
Yep, I just, if I may, so the one thing you're, you asked, what, what, what I would like to see would be the series of grants that you'd like to apply for, and what their deadlines are, and what their requirements are. So we know, like, when is the submittal date? And how much do you, does the town need to have committed to, for you to apply these, and that would be helpful.
So, Tom, we have that information, and we present that at town meeting. Now, the level of requirements for those grants are, I don't want to say they're infinite, but they are very large. And I think, I don't think that's what you would be wanting to see in a meeting. Because we have, we have a very extensive document that we're working on, and we have already matched that a lot of the requirements for grants should actually be part of the IFB, deliverables for the engineering. So there's a lot of moving parts there. So if you're gonna ask me what are the requirements for, you know, it would be something like, you know, we have to submit the design for the path to not be, I don't know.
No, 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 not those. So you just indicated to us that we just missed a grant deadline.
Yes.
So obviously, it would have been helpful for us to note that there was a grant deadline for X amount of grants, and in order for you to apply, this is what you would have needed from the town, what commitment.
Okay, you're asking for the money commitment for.
Yeah, that's, well, we don't do any of the other stuff.
Well, that's what I thought you.
We're not, we're not doing the Marshall Plan design, you guys are doing that with your consultants.
The way you were asking, no.
No, I want to know what the deadlines are, and what you need in the bank, or what you need committed in order to, to, so here, here's grant A, B, and C that are coming up in the next several months. How much do you need in the bank committed for you to apply for those grants?
And I think what Mr. Alonso also suggested, and I want to double on that, is an idea of what the grant's for, right? Like, you know, I think, I think, you know, we don't need to get the forty-page booklet of, of the rules, but it would be nice to get a little brief summary that says, you know, grant for apples is due on, you know, March the first. It will cover walkways, et cetera, up to twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, and it requires matching grants. Something brief, succinct, and what the deadline is, that, that gives us the information that we need to know what the matching grant could be used for, when your submission deadlines are, and what they're looking for from you. As far as you need money in the bank, you need to provide a proposal, a plan, whatever it is.
And with, a lot of these grants, it's not necessarily money in the bank, it's the commitment that it comes, yeah.
And I, I just want to also concur with what the chair said about, I'd love to know what your plan is, what, what the commission's plan is to fund the park, regardless of, let's say this money didn't exist, what would you do?
Well, that's, that's when we go to, you know.
Okay, well, if you're, if you're looking at the town manager, that's fine, then work with the town manager, but that's.
But that's the responsible thing to do, is to work with the CFO.
I would agree, I'm all for the responsible thing to do. But if you're looking for information that's gonna help me make a decision about the timely, the timeliness and the amount that I'd be willing to commit from the ARPA funds, those are the things I'd need to know.
Mr. Franco, did you have a question or comment?
I, I don't know, I, I think all of these asks are totally reasonable, and it gives us a better picture. So I've just been listening and approving of what's being said, so.
I told Lou this meeting was gonna be over at eight-thirty.
Yeah, it's ten o'clock, too. Do you hear the, you hear the chimes, Lou? Can you hear them from there?
Very kindly for.
Just for clarification, Ms. Lockwood, the park is advancing in the engineering phase. Can you refresh everyone's memory of when you anticipate the engineering to be completed? And, and have documents ready for, for bid? Is it the next eighteen months, is it, is it twelve months?
Definitely, so, so as, as the status where we are, we have had, the commission has split up into doing two works at the same time. One was the research of the grants, and another one was drafting the IFB in order to support, you know, town manager only has someone helping her part-time, which at some point should be addressed. So we have taken on creating the first draft of the IFB. And as we're doing, researching the grants, we, it was a good exercise, because we realized that there are a lot of requirements that, for grants that should be deliverables on the IFB. So now we're working on merging those two documents. So we have, at least I have a dozen of grants that we have researched and taken the information. The, the initial timeline of getting the IFB ready was, the town manager said three months, we're a month, one and a half now. Our plan was to review in our next meeting, so, and give her our first draft, which we hope to have enough information by next month. So then hopefully, her and her team will be able to finalize it, and we should have the IFB out within her timeline. So I'm thinking the, I, I think the engineering phase would be six to eight months, the most.
So i- if it's, if it's put out, the RFP's put out, and, and that contract's let, you know, late spring, then probably early next year, we should be pretty well along in terms of the advancement of, of the design.
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping that the design will be done before the end of this, this year.
Mm-hmm.
Because that had, this, this deadline that we just missed was, is the biggest grant there is, the London Water Conservation Fund, and is one that is actually, for us to maximize the, the funds, the, you know, how much grant we can get, we have to really prove that it has made climate resilience requests, and all, all sorts of things, and that's why it needs to be part of the deliverables of the engineering. So being done before the end of the year is when it'll get us ready to apply for it again. And the other thing would be, you know, do we have the matching funds? Because if we don't have the matching funds for that, we then have to wait for the May twenty, twenty-four for town meeting at that point. And that can then derail everything else. But, okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
No, 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 just.
Yeah, with this, I'm gonna consider this, by the way, to be communications from another board. Because this definitely was well beyond a public comment, and it was definitely as chair of a board communicating with us, so.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you everybody, thank you.
All right, any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, any other board comments this evening? I will make one. So I want to, I really want to comment to the town manager, and Heather and I have spent so much time together lately. You know, something that, something that Anna just mentioned is that an IFB takes about three months to pull together and get out the door. And an IFB is invitation for bids, and an RFP, request for proposals, usually takes about six to eight weeks. And I just want to comment on, you know, you know, Heather and I have been working together, and to get an RFP out the door in a, in a week and a half is insane, it's a lot of work. And I just want to really highlight and congratulate the town manager on that really momentous task. There's been a lot of work that's, that's been going on, I know Heather has been working non-stop, basically, since, you know, right before the tenth of this month. You know, working on Saturdays, working on Sundays, and, and this has been a lot, it's been a lot. So I, Heather, I just want to just acknowledge your hard work.
Thank you.
On behalf of the community, you know, I know that these moments are tough to get through, we're certainly getting through it. But I just want to thank you, and really just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
For your dedication.
Yeah, because you've been putting in those same hours as well, so, and fully committed to doing right by the town.
Thank you, Anna. All right, is there, the ten, time is ten oh one, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say, uh, this is a roll call vote. All in favor, select woman Soroka.
Aye.
Selectman Dwyer.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. The time is ten oh one, and we are adjourned to all those who've joined with us. We trust you will have a wonderful evening, and we will see you here next week on the seventh. Have a good night.